It's five o'clock.
Mr. Godino, you know.
It is five o'clock, May 21st, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
This is a time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed. On the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. At this time, may we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have five items this evening. However, four of the items are related. They are all existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. That pertains to items A and B on the City Council, and D and E on behalf of the Airport Authority. The name of the litigation and the case number is fully set forth on the agenda. The other item is a City Council item, which is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 549-57B. The position title is City Manager. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. I do have two cards, Ramiro Rodriguez, on item A. Now, these are closed session items. I don't know what information you may have.
I'd just like to ask some questions about the first item, about the litigation on the four letters A, B, D, and E. It's still, I guess it's still haunting us, the litigation, the lawsuits against the city. But I noticed that litigation, the players, the actors from before that were actually working with the city and working with our city manager or assistant city manager at the time. Now, I'd like to know, are they suing the city? Does the city again have to defend themselves on these issues? One of the things is, I wasn't able to find out any backup material. Well, I was. I had to search and search and search. And I found backup materials. I had to call the lawyers and people, and they sent me information. But I'd like to know why we're not granted that information of the litigation going on right now against the city. But with these Kinsels and these other guys and Newman's that were the players of the first lawsuit to begin with. Thank you.
And you also have item C?
On the closed session, for the performance evaluation of the city manager, I'd like to know also what steps the city is taking and also to evaluate the past performance of this person and the past situations that he put the city in. I don't understand how the person can actually be taken in consideration to be employed by the city after the history of his past actions. I don't see any other city, you know, Southern California, United States, that would probably hire a person with the history. Maybe it wasn't up to him, maybe it was somebody else. But the thing is, that never has been clarified to begin with. He was never cleared. He was never found guilty, but never cleared completely, found innocent or exonerated of all the charges.
Totally cleared. They dropped all charges.
Who said?
SEC said.
We never got that information. Last time I read, when the SEC said they had never given any immunity to nobody or exactly even insinuated immunity to any of the players for any reasons. Well, why wasn't that memo given to the general public then?
That was provided to the general public. The SEC dismissed all cases, all actions against Mr. Metzler.
I did see that statement from you. But I didn't see that statement from the SEC. Thank you.
That's all that we have. We will now recess to our closed session. And our regular session convenes at 6:00 P.M.
Oh, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. I know, I had it for two weeks. Thank you for being so considerate.
We are ready to start now. It is 6:05, May 21st, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets' successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had five items this evening. Four of them were existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. And those were items A and B on behalf of the City Council, items D and E on behalf of the Airport Authority. The case number and case names are fully set forth on the agenda. The other item is item C, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57B. The position title was City Manager. There is no reportable action at this time with respect to any of those items.
Thank you very much. This evening, we will have the invocation delivered by Father Jude from St. John of Arc Catholic Church and the pledge of allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Passenger. Please stand.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for our city of Victorville and all who serve it. As the City Council gathers to deliberate and decide on matters so important to the present and future well-being of Victorville, bless and guide its members through the grace of your Spirit. Help them each to set aside petty concerns that together they might best serve the common good of Victorville's residents and honor the purpose for which they were elected. As this meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give each person clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and sense of humor. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words. Give them presence of mind and open heart to serve the city of Victorville. All these intentions, and in your name, we pray to you. Amen.
Amen.
Hand of your heart.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic of America.
This evening, we do have a proclamation that I will be presenting. I'd like to invite Douglas Henninger and Angel Mota to come forward and join me, please. These employees represent the men and women from our Public Works Division. These hard-working professionals maintain our city's infrastructure and improve our quality of life. They maintain our streets, sewer system, remove graffiti, maintain our city vehicles, and much more. This week is National Public Works Week, and I invite our entire community to join us in celebrating the importance of public works to Victorville and our nation. Tonight, I'm pleased to join my fellow council members in honoring the entire Victorville Public Works Division with this proclamation.
We can't hear you.
Thank you to Public Works, and each and every one of you. We are so proud of you. Thank you. At this time, can we have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and persecution. Those are all the documents I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Any items on this agenda that might be a conflict of interest to any council member or board members should be identified at this time. Is there any? There is none. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening. Therefore, we move on to public hearings. And I have item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against Victorville Water District Board of Directors making its determinations to fix, levy, and collect standby charges for water improvement, District Numbers 1 and 2. The recommendation is that the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District approve resolutions numbers VWD-19-004 and VWD-19-005. At this time, is there any questions of staff from council members? I will start with Ms. Jones.
None. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
None at this time.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, will this item come every year? For how many years? I know we approved a schedule fee.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is an item that we do bring before the council every year. And it's intended that it be brought back for every year into the future until such a time as determined that you, as the Water District Board of Directors, no longer want the standby fee in place. Are you aware of a sunset beyond the discretion of this council?
No, the only thing I would add is, once you stop, you can't get it back without going out to a Prop 218.
That last one, discretion or whatever you said, I didn't understand, and I fully didn't get what you were saying. Would you repeat that and then his response to that?
It's certainly within discretion, and that's the deliberation you take here tonight to decide if you want to continue with the standby fee or not continue with the standby fee. Staff certainly recommends that you do. But it's something, because it has to be asked and answered annually by this council if you want to continue with it, that's what I meant by discretion.
Okay, and then to contextualize this, this has to do with 68 people showing up that they didn't want the tax base rate to go up higher? Was, is that correlated to this item?
No.
So is this going to be costing taxpayer dollars? Clearly, it says per parcel residential $15, and another one says about $30.
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item involves a standby fee and really affects undeveloped property that is within a certain distance from an existing sewer main. And Water Code allows water districts to basically charge property owners that are enjoying the benefit of being so close to such a main, making it easier for them to effectively tap into it when the property is available to develop. Absent this kind of a fee, you would be required then to make up the costs that would otherwise be borne in your rates. So you have the opportunity, instead of having your ratepayers pay this, you're actually having the property owners that are getting the direct benefit from the water main being so close to their properties.
Does this also affect our commercial businesses?
If they're commercial existing businesses, no, because those would be effectively undeveloped properties. This is affecting only undeveloped properties within a certain distance of the water main.
And that would be for WID 1? For WID 2, it's all properties?
So here it says, the last fiscal year, 5,057 parcels were assessed at a total of $80,720. And then there's another one that says the assessment will be made on 11,689 parcels for a total of 329,312. So it just goes to say, you're saying these are where no one lives in or has that property in terms of already being structured?
And I do stand corrected as to WID 2. That's the Baldi Mesa area. As Mr. Matthews has indicated, in WID 2, which is the old Baldi Mesa area, it's all properties. And that's largely because in WID 2, they actually issued bonds to finance the improvements. So they actually had to broaden the security beyond just undeveloped properties.
Is there any way to create an assessment or a CFD?
You certainly could, but it's not necessary in this case because you've got a mechanism in place to pay for the associated benefit.
And it doesn't come from the general fund, is that correct?
This is water district funds, not city funds.
And would you be able to tell us how those sources are revenues and how we're able to pay from taxpayer dollars?
So the sources are ratepayer revenue. It's all defined in a five-year rate plan that you adopt every five years. I think we're coming up on one and probably should expect to visit a rate plan probably this time next year. We just are initiating efforts in that regard. But not taxes, this is user fees.
Okay, so maybe I'm mistaken, but not too long ago, it hasn't been a year, where we said there was 12 years where we had not assessed anything of a user fee. And so in my head, I'm correlating this particular one with the Prop 218, specifically with what is going to be asked today to be approved.
Yeah, and you're likely combining thoughts across different utilities. We're talking right now just about the water. It's very likely you could be talking about a different special fund unrelated to water.
It was also related to water. We had a lot of protestants come in and say, we don't want our water rates to go up. So I wanted to make sure if this is the same or is this totally different?
I believe it's different because you use the timeframe of 12 years. We, in the case of water, we adopted rates, what, four years ago?
Yeah, three years ago.
Rate plan, and we've been annually adopting the rates recommended in that rate plan as we've done the budgets.
Okay, so we've already done enough marketing for the for the city to know that this is coming and it's going to raise their fees, right?
We've done the requisite public noticing and outreach as prescribed in the code.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment.
Yes, go ahead.
The standby charges, if you have, the best way to understand this, if the water district puts a water main in a street and there are five houses on the street and one vacant lot, the five houses through their user, using water, would pay for it. The one individual, unless we had a standby fee, would be paying nothing. They wouldn't be paying for the capital. They wouldn't be paying for the maintenance. But they would have the right at any time to connect to that line, which would be paid for by all the users. So if you did away with this, you'd have to raise the rate to all the users, and the public said they don't want a user rate increase. And that's exactly what we're doing. So this is making vacant land where there are no structures, except for the bond issue in the Baldi Mesa area, having water available and paying an availability fee so at such time as they develop the property, the water is available. And it isn't shouldered by the user rate. So it saves the, it keeps the rates down for all the people who have a meter and pay a water bill every month.
Any other questions? None? At this time, I open the public hearing. Thank you. And I do have one card. Joe Foggetti?
Okay, let's talk about the water. Okay? My bills every month I get from, are 30 days. So I get my electric bill, the 15th of every month study. I get any other kind of bills. People I buy from, I get their bills. It's once a month. However, the water bill, okay, comes every 28 days. So instead of having 12 bills a year, I get 13 bills a year. So you sneak and steal an extra month of bills out of the year because your cycle's on 28 days, not monthly. So, pack of thieves. For my vacant lands, like Jim Cox knows everywhere I live, right, Jim?
You get what?
Okay.
Paco's everywhere you live.
Quiet, quiet.
I didn't know.
I'm charged for the vacant land, for the access to the water fees. I'm charged $10, I believe, a year to have access to that water. And it's $10 per acre. Since those acreages are more than an acre, I get charged $20 a year for each of those vacant lots. Okay, for other property I own, I have to pay $4 a month for the drain fee for each water bill. There isn't a drain within three or four miles from those properties, but I get charged every month to have a drain. Okay? And that comes on my trash or water bill. Okay? So you got a lot of corruption here. You're stealing from a lot of people. You're adding in charges that are ridiculous. Okay? And so would you like to install the drains on my property that you're charging me for them? Would you like to redo all the years I've been paying all the water bills? Instead of paying 12 bills a year, I've been paying 13? We could do a class action suit. I got enough time to do this, that you would have to reimburse everybody for years and years and years. Go ahead, laugh. Okay?
Well, you're not being truthful.
Quiet, don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me. So, yeah, we could do that. Okay? Seriously. I got the time to do it. You're stealing from people. You're not right. Okay? And just like I went after her, I'll go after you too.
Come on down.
You're to zip your mouth and listen. You don't understand that. So now you're in conflict with your policy. You're supposed to listen. Let's smarten up real quick. Okay, you're stealing from people. This is a crime.
Your time is up.
Could arrest you?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, only because there's a distortion of fact in the comments to the point where the allegation, I think, requires a response. As to the allegation that we're billing 13 and stealing, we bill once a month, period. There's 12 bills that go out a year. We're not sneaking in a 13th bill, and there's certainly no stealing from the city of its ratepayers connected to its water bills.
The bill is based upon actual use and based upon the meter. Whether you get a bill a month or two bills a month, it's based upon a meter reading, period.
And this is only for the City of Victorville?
This is a standby fee and not for the use of water, so.
And then also, when there's a speaker, he has this three-minute limit. I would suggest and continue to follow decorum and professionalism, even from Mr. Cox.
He addressed me, not the council, and I answered and will continue to do so. And our council has agreed that when people make false statements, we need to correct the record. Thank you.
I do not have any other speaker cards. Did anyone have anything else to say?
I'd like to make this. You have a service charge besides a water fee each month.
I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir.
Okay?
Your time is up.
So you're not having correct accountability. No, you'll listen to me because it's false records. Okay?
Mr. Cox, any person or group who interferes with the conduct of City Council by willfully interrupting or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. You know, we have created policies.
Of order?
The same thing with you.
I will continue.
Please respect the fact that this man has three minutes.
Speaker cards?
I'm just letting you know. I have to do it, you have to do it, we all have to do it here. So I appreciate it. We are, we're all here to respect each other.
Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Five-minute recess. We are starting back up again. Our five minutes are up. And sorry about that, but I will be calling recesses if we keep getting interruptions.
Thank you for that, ma'am.
There goes another one.
Please continue.
Mayor Garcia, I think we're still on B1. I don't know if you've closed the public hearing yet.
No, I have not.
Okay.
I have two warnings right now.
Focus.
At this time, I close the public hearing. Therefore, I need a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number VWD-19-004 and VWD-19-005.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Board of Directors for the Victorville Water District approve, excuse me, take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yeah, it's clear that I, as a council member... Yeah, it's clear that I, as a council member, don't understand quite well the standby fee, which I'm assuming is property owner increases in water, so in that five-minute recess, I was able to talk to Jim Cox briefly about what it is that my personal understanding in terms of what this means, which a lot of us in the audience also perceive to be the case, in my discussion, I asked Cox, when we have hearings such of this nature, instead of arguing, what we could do is have a minimal presentation of what is actually being recorded, because if I, as one of the council members, am not understanding, generally the public won't have, and as an insider, I think it behooves the administration to be able to give the best presentation, even if it's very brief for our community audience, despite there being a pro or an against vote, and I think that would be impossible in something of this nature.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the adoption of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan approving submission of CDBG and Home Program Grant applications to HUD and authorizing the city manager to sign all implementing documents required by HUD. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen and agency comments regarding the draft fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan and approve and adopt resolution number 19-039, the annual action plan as presented for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which contains the funding recommendations made by the Committee Planning and Development Grant Subcommittee and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for submittal to HUD.
Thank you. Are there any questions staffed by council members?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you, on, excuse me, on this item on page sixty-eight of the backup materials, I had a couple questions, and this certainly isn't going one way or the other, I don't know that I'm gonna get the full of the answers that I would look forward to this evening, it's not gonna affect my vote, but I do, would like to have this information, so, on page sixty-eight, and this is for grant funding to Sixth Street prep for their after-school enrichment program, so I had some questions with regard to that, typically, schools, districts receive funding from the state, grants from the state for after-school programs, especially if they're Title I schools, I know this is a charter school, but I don't know where it fits into that, and if this funding is specifically, I know it says that sixty-five students will benefit from this program, if it's meant to be sixty-five students in addition to what they might already provide, or if it's, or if it's an increase in time is what the funding will be used for, so that's, those are my questions, I don't expect an answer this evening, but if I could get that sometime in the future, I'd appreciate it. That's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, so, reading this, thirty-nine applicants, only thirty-one were approved, I want you to point out to me the nine that were not approved, and I would like, since it was an ad hoc committee of two council members, meeting Mrs. Ramirez and Gloria, please explain, I know Sophie isn't here, she would be the best person to explain this, but what is the regimen that is used, we don't wanna make sure that nobody's left out for whatever reason, whether it's political or not, which it can be, as you can clearly see up here up front, that's why you have an ad hoc committee and it's vested interest, so, I really wanna understand, what is the process, what is the pointage system, what is it that's happening here, I counted fourteen entities here, and it says agencies and group organizations and others who participated in the process of consultation, so if you can combine your explanation with that, I would greatly appreciate it in terms of understanding why these nine individuals that submitted did not get approved, but thirty-one of the thirty-nine were.
Madam Mayor, and I'll defer to Scott if he can offer anything above and beyond what I can, but certainly, as it relates to the eight applications that apparently did not get funded, I can tell you, certainly politics had nothing to do with the decision-making because the rulemaking and the criterion established, they're very factual, they're actually laid out and governed by the federal government as they award these funds to entitlement cities such as ourselves, so, we have to focus on a number of criterion, including whether or not they've actually complied with the requirements of the program, so, can't speak specifically to them, we can certainly follow up separately if the council so desires to give better explanation on those eight, but nonetheless, and is a large part of the reason why this council appoints two members to a subcommittee to basically go through the voluminous nature of these applications to make sure each of them fits the described need of the program and actually meets all the requirements. Back in January, Mayor Garcia and Vice Mayor Ramirez were actually appointed and sat with Deputy City Manager Smith to deliberate on all of these applications and brought forward this collective recommendation for you. Scott, you have anything further to add?
Yeah, just to specify, in the staff report, it goes over what the national objectives are, as Keith mentioned, we're held to federal standards on what these funds go towards, but yeah, it's listed in the staff report such as decent housing, suitable living environments, also, the council has a policy also to provide guidance on how these funds are utilized, so we generally refer to the CON Plan, which is our five-year plan, so these selections that are brought forward for your consideration today meet all those requirements, we do have limited funds, I mean, if we had a vast amount of funds that were unlimited, potentially more could qualify, also into consideration is their financial need, if their application shows that they already have financial means for that program, they may not be as highly competitive as ones that do not show that funds available.
Okay, I know Mr. Metzler said it's not political, however, I have an organization that for seven years applied and never got assent, and this is coming from some of these nonprofits, so I'm glad you clarified some of this, because we don't ever want this to be personality clashes or you side with one person over the other, the other thing is, I was looking at these applications and I noticed that a lot of the city of Victorville is receiving these, and at one point, I kinda held conflict with it, because up to date, I still don't understand
Have thirty seconds.
How the city of Victorville is actually assisting with the abatement or with code enforcement and with demolition, where we have properties that have been demolished but are not being assisted, and I grant issue with that, when nine out of the thirty-one are all city-related, so if someone can express how that works, I would greatly wanna be more educated in terms of that, so it doesn't look like a conflict of interest.
Sir, is it in a timely fashion that these are required by a particular date, and does this follow your master plan that I asked the last time regarding affordable housing and that in order to meet the needs of the citizens of Victorville?
Yes, this is ultimately a goal to provide assistance for mainly the people in our target areas, which our census tracks with more than fifty-one percent in the median or low-income range, so, we utilize these funds, but as far as the process, this started in late last year with two workshops, an application filing period that ended in mid-January, followed by a public hearing that came to you in February, where organizations stated their needs, followed by a subcommittee meeting where we reviewed all the applications, and then we had to do a thirty-day notice period that is what's before you tonight of the proposed action plan.
We are within the timeline, and the deadline is when, may I ask?
I believe HUD just wants the applications submitted by August.
Are we within the process?
Yes, yes, we are.
And we will meet the timeline?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, if I may dare to say, we have code enforcement and demolition, how is it possible to take those out and render another entity that's nonprofit?
Your time was up.
Then don't ask for more questions.
No, no.
Right, then don't ask for more questions, be clear as a chair. No, she wasn't, if had she been, I wouldn't have asked questions.
Okay, I will continue, I will call another recess, or I will have someone
Well, go ahead and do what you need to do, ma'am, you're the chair, aren't you?
Minute recess. Our five minutes are up, so we are back on again. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have some speaker cards, so I shall start calling out the names. The first card that I have is Jamie Waldron, and after Jamie will be Bridget Martinez.
Hello, I'm Jimmy Waldron from High Desert Homeless Services, I'm the Executive Director. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for your time and your consideration and your continued efforts to help with the homeless, and we just wanted to be here and tell you thank you, we really appreciate your continued efforts to support us in our efforts to help with the problem and to also applaud you in your forward thinking with developing the homeless task force, together we can do amazing things what we can't do alone, thank you.
Thank you. Bridget Martinez, and after Bridget, Carla Portillo.
Hi, my name is Bridget Martinez, I am the program manager for the Family Assistance Program, and I would just like to share a few of the success stories from our program. The Family Assistance Program is a one-stop shop for low-income families at our community center that we assist, sixty-six participants, participants sustain and get into housing. Last week alone, we serviced two-hundred-and-nineteen women and two-hundred-and-sixty-six men. FamSpot is our youth drop-in center, FamSpot with the probation youth to date that have completed the community service hours is four-thousand-eight-hundred. We have housed thirty homeless youth since January, a hundred-and-twenty youth were referred through the probation department, and seventy of those youths successfully discharged probation in our program. Twelve people received jobs from our youth drop-in center, because the city of Victorville has helped us to provide these services on C Street, we have been able to successfully keep at-risk youth and victims of domestic violence off the streets. We continue to thank the city of Victorville for making this possible through our program. At the very beginning, before the community center came to C Street, we had, we partnered with Revive Old Town, which is called Root, and they went door-knocking and surveyed all the residents, and their number-one response on their surveys that they wanted in Old Town Victorville was a community center and a playground. We now have been able to provide that to Old Town Victorville, and we continue to service hundreds and hundreds of people, and we just wanted to come here today to thank you all for allowing us this service in Victorville.
Thank you, thank you very much. Carla Portillo, and after Carla, Kayla Hammack.
I just wanted to say thank you for having FamSpot open for the youth and letting everybody go, that like, doesn't have nowhere to go after school.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for having us have a playground and somewhere to stay after school, for us to have activities, for us to bond with people and make new friends at FamSpot, and that's all.
Thank you. I cannot make out the first name, but the last name is Hill.
I would say thank you for having FamSpot open, because it's fun, we have fun, talk, play together, and have fun, thank you.
Thank you. Hassan Wilkerson.
I wanna say thank you for this FamSpot, helps me get my community service done.
Thank you. I believe this one is Morel, I can't make out the last name.
I wanna thank the FamSpot for letting me have a place to go when I come home from school, and I like to bond with other people, and they build a basketball court so I can play there and practice sometimes, and I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Mario Alvarez? Is there a Mario Alvarez?
Hello, council members, good evening.
Hello.
I just wanted to thank you so much for, since the last meeting that we had in downtown about the lights, since then, there are LED lights now in the community, so much better makes a world of difference, so, I just wanted to thank you for that, I'm grateful to see that change down there, and I also wanted to speak on, there's still a little bit more work, and the alleys are still darkened, unfortunately, so, still need to go through there as a resident and other residents there as well. Now, the main thing that, my main concern is also as well for my family, the kids, you know, at their young age, they should be more concerned with enjoying their youth, you know, and unfortunately, when we go out, you know, when we come back home, it's more concerned about safety, and to have that sense of security and safety not there for them at that age, it does bother me, and that's why I'm here to speak for myself, my family, and for the residents of Old Town as well that feel this and go through this every day, so, I just wanted to thank you for your time, and please keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Joe Fogarty.
Yeah, I have two issues on this, and first one would be, don't you see a nice bunch of kids that are gonna be the future leaders here, okay? I can see them replacing our city council, and I, make Victorville great again, that's Trump's thing, and you're a bunch of good kids, and I really appreciate that, we need to clean up this place, these guys can do it. The second thing, I'm kinda confused on the issue, is with the code enforcement issued, a Blanca brought it up, okay, about the demolition of the property in Old Town, and I'm not totally informed, but the one thing, code enforcement, there is nobody that oversees them, when people have a problem with code enforcement, it's like the Gestapo, they have nobody over them and code enforcement will make up stuff, and will do stuff and intimidate, overcharge, apply fees, aggressive fees, and Congress, okay, just posted, I'm sorry, the US Supreme Court, when Wednesday, ruled nine to zero that the constitutional ban on excessive fines written into the Eighth Amendment applies to state as well, sweeping ruling that strengthens property rights and limits police seizures, okay? And with code enforcement and other civil procedures of taking somebody's property and stealing it, because some people here may have an intent that they like that property, so, if you don't like, if they don't like you, they put code enforcement on you, right, Gloria? And so they seize that property and And so they seize that property, and it's done illegally, backhanded, undermined it, okay? And that is happening here, and I believe if I look into further at the one that was demolished, which I will, I've been very sick, but I go down there, and I'll look at it, and I'll bet you I'll find some hanky-panky. Okay? You're accountable. And with the homeless and stuff, I was, last week spoke to code enforcement here about the camps along Palmdale Road, one in my backyard here, okay, that they need to be removed. They're not removed. These people did four-hundred-thousand dollars damage to my property. So would your city council, that they're responsible because they live in the city, would you like to pay me that four-hundred-thousand dollars and be responsible for any further damage they do to my property and my neighbors' properties? Because would you like to take that responsibility? Or would you like to do something about it? Because nothing is getting done.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Blanca Gomez. After Blanca, Rosio Garcia.
I would like this council to begin to consider the general unconsciousness that our nonprofits may have in terms of how 1.3 million dollars and nearly half a million dollars are distributed. It should be a goal of the city to be able to inform fully those individuals that do not understand. I'm the first one that does not understand. And if I can't get it, and I'm an insider and have access, full access to administration, and we're not providing the presentation for our general public, we're doing our general public a disservice. Also, if our Development Services Department has a demolition budget that assists our property owners, how is it that the city is making sure that our property owners are not being assisted with these federal fundings? Seventy-five thousand have, are recommended today to be allocated. For code enforcement, a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars are being allocated. How are we using these sources as federal funding for the need that we have particularly, and we all see it, all Old Town or other areas? If we're not, then we're doing, again, a disservice to our community. Lastly, please let the audience know consistently how they can receive this agenda by simply providing their emails to Heidi Roche, H-R-O-C-H-E, at Victorville.ca.gov. This is quite lengthy, and we have all thirty-one proponents here. We're missing nine. I can't make the best decision if I'm missing the nine people or the nine nonprofits. Let's continue to have something like this, but let's not miss out all the information for council members to be able to make the best decision when they need to and not rely on administration. We have our own independence and mindset. Thank you.
Rosio Garcia.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosio Garcia, and we're from Acor Solution. This is Raquel Jennings. We are founders and Vice President and President at Acor Solution. And we just wanted to thank you guys for the CBDG, CBDG grant that was awarded to us, or that will be awarded to us. We've been able to serve over twenty-two-hundred families in the last four years, nine-hundred families in 2018 alone. So we believe in the Chinese proverb, feed them and a fish, and you'll feed them for a day. Teach them how to fish, and you'll feed them for a lifetime. So we truly, truly, truly want to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to do that and educate our High Desert and what we need to do to be better. So thank you again for the opportunity, and thank you for the grant.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Those were all the cards that I had at this time. At this time, I closed the public hearing, and I need a motion in a second to adopt resolution number nineteen dash zero three-nine.
Well, I'd like to do an alternate, to make a recommendation.
On the agenda. At this time.
So I'd like to alter to make a recommendation.
I haven't gotten.
I'm making a motion, ma'am. You asked for a motion.
Haven't gotten to that point yet. Right now, I need a motion.
That's what you were receiving from me. Would you like me to utter it a third time without cutting me off? So I'd like to make an alternate motion to make a recommendation to grant funding for the Victorville Community Services Department, which is a nonprofit in lieu of the Development Department, which is demolition, which is seventy-five thousand, or code enforce, or code enforcement, which is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Now I need a motion to adopt a resolution.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Subcommittee for the work that they've done on this. I'm sure that it was a lengthy and tedious process, especially when there's so many good organizations out there. I do want to commend all, all of the organizations that applied for grant funding for their hearts of gold and wanting to do well by the members in our community. It always, it, it's such a blessing to me to know that in our particular community, we have so mu, so many people that truly do care and are willing to give of their own personal time freely to serve one another. Councilmember Gomez made a comment that I think is worthy of being taken a look at. And when I reviewed this, I, I am not able to find every single application that was submitted by all of the organizations. And I'm wondering if going forward, we might take a look at providing all of that so that we can make the most informed decisions that we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm sorry, there's still comments, and I know we're going a little bit too fast. And I would like to also comment on this portion. So I appreciate it. So my comment here is, the reason I stated as a public commenter the need to have the nine individual nonprofits was because we always want to consider, take it, two council members ad hoc, do not, do not decide for the rest of the council how each individual council feels. And even though I agree with most of this list, I wanted to make sure that this council realizes that there could be other potentialities that we can recommend. And so what I wanted to say is, we had nonprofits who were under the, in, under the misguided information, like I was, that they were not getting any funding. But it so happens is because we have the home under CDBG, it's all-in-one. And I didn't consider it that way. So in order for having a small presentation for our community, it's important for them to know, not just for me, but for them. Thank you.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent counter. Consent counter items, C1 through C3, may be approved with one motion, unless there is a council member that requested an item to be pulled for further discussion.
I'm just going to be commenting on these specifically, C1 and C3. I'm sorry, and C2. And I do have a question on C2. So, okay, so then if I may, so for item C1, just for the public's knowledge is, we approved ten million dollars for commercial demand, schedule number nineteen. I'm still trying to figure out our trans, our wire transfers and our transfers. It seems to be very typical. I thought it was four-point-five million, but I think that's our payroll, and I'm paying closer attention to the ten million commercially that we're, we're going to start looking at patterns of this nature. So I wanted the audience to start paying attention to that. For item C2, there's eighty thousand, about eighty thousand dollars for computer replacement. So my question is, how many units are being replaced? If you can please provide, I'm going to say the council, although I'm interested in looking at the invoices for the particularities. Because I know, I don't know if it was just the software or the hardware. I don't know if it was a specific department. And so I'm really interested in finding out what specifically is being replaced, not just generically. Is Community Service Department going to have it repaired and not Public Works? Is it going to be Administration and not Water Department? That's what I was interested in gathering with this information.
I suggest that information be given to Ms. Gomez at a later time.
Yeah, that's your suggestion, but we have, I have time for them to respond. And I'm asking for a response right now. You can also place the information in my inbox. If you don't have the information, more than welcome to just provide it in writing if that's Administration's not having the response today. I would be fine with that.
Put it in writing, submit it to the young manager.
You're not the Administration.
I'm the authority here.
You're not. You're just a figurehead. So if Keith doesn't have, is not prepared to speak, I'm not going to force him to say what he can't.
It's submitted in writing.
I'm not going to submit it in writing. Do you ever submit anything in writing?
Five-minute recess. Five minutes are up. We will continue on. Madam Clerk, where did we stop?
I think we are looking for a motion in a second on the three consent counter items.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, C1 through C3.
I make an substitute motion to pull out C2 and then approve with one motion, C1 and C3.
Is there a second?
I'll second that one. To be clear, it was to just pull C2 from the consent agenda? Sure, I'll second that.
All those? Should we just remind you?
There is a motion on the floor right now. It's a substitute motion to approve with the pulling of item C2. So it would be just approving C1 and C3 at this point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, uh, motion, sorry. Is there any further comments? No further comments? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we move on to written communications.
Now we have to have a discussion on C2.
Oh, C2, okay.
Waiting for a motion, I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to approve C2.
She has cards for speakers on that item.
After the motion.
If someone wants to help the mayor, please do.
Is there a second? For C2, we have a motion.
Are we taking a motion before we have public comment?
I'd take comments after the motion.
Okay. Okay, sure, I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes. Never in the history of the city of Victorville do we make a motion and second and vote before we hear the public comment. Is there a reason today, right now, at this hour, we are deciding to do this differently?
We're just having a discussion.
So we don't, so in other words, you don't hear public comment before we vote. So we vote, and then we hear public comment. And that's what's being said? I mean, the attorney could answer that.
Do you have some cards on this?
I have none.
Yes, because I gave the city clerk a card that I would speak on that item.
We had a discussion, and I suggested to you that, that you could make your comments right now in the questions that are usually afforded to all council members when there's a motion sitting on the table. I thought you were going to do that.
No, I, that's not my understanding of the interpretation.
Then it would be appropriate to ask Ms. Gomez if she wants to provide comments, questions related to the motion that's on the floor.
Do you have any comments?
Okay, so in other words, I'm not going to be a public commenter. Is that correct?
How would you like to do it?
Well, it was my understanding that I'm going to be a public commenter. So I would, I, instead of confusing me, I would like to continue with that thought process.
Okay, then it would be appropriate if you want to go down and.
I think I need to be, she needs to be able to call out that card. That's her role.
She doesn't have it.
You're not going to provide it for her.
I will now, but we had understanding at first.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones, for your benefit, there was a misunderstanding. I had talked with Councilmember Gomez.
Thank you, you saw me pause. Okay, thank you.
So I thought that she was going to be able to make her comments when the motion was pending on the, on the dais.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, Blanca Gomez, I don't know what it is that you need to do, but do whatever. You never follow the rules.
Shut up and get to the podium, you have that anymore. Get to it.
We don't need that, okay? We don't need that anymore.
So, as a public commenter, I know Mr. Captain Besseger, we have one person, a white woman who is yelling, an older white woman. And she has not been addressed by any of these council members. And the first thing that we do as a council member is we address anybody who's being loud. Please, stop interrupting me. I have three minutes as a public commenter. You don't have a right just because you are the appointed mayor to do that. Anybody here can come and sing to you if they wanted to. Don't get exacerbated. I'm not a council member right now. Just Blanca Gomez, typical audience member, okay? So please, stop. That shows the level of professionalism that you carry within the rest of the council. It reflects on all the council. Well, anyways, that's the second time that this woman, who's a white female, and none of the council members have decided to shut her down.
Maggie, you're going to have to remove yourself if you don't quiet down. Please.
So for C2, in order for council members to decide once again, it may be that the Administration didn't figure that we might want to have a little bit more information as to what departments are being affected. And I know as council, we have, the council has general discretion. And I have noticed, going through the employee park gathering, that there is a lot of monies re-appropriate in certain areas. And the lower echelons of our employees are not receiving the deamable living wage salary. So when I come to this item. So when I come to this item, in the back of my head, the first thing that I think about is what department is being affected? Is it Administration, the most highly paid? Is it the lower echelons? Is it Community Services? The one that gets the meager low ends, but Community Services serves 23 parks? A lot of our children go to these parks. So the only reason why I question this is because I want to make an educated response if I'm sitting as a council member, and I think each of us would want to do that. So I'm not blaming Administration for not providing that information. I get it that it's new, that you have a council member that wants to have data that's statistically analyzed so that she or he can make the best decision for our public. We don't get to sit, or council doesn't get to sit on many occasions with the CEO of this company or this organization and get to say to each council member, this is what we're doing. So in order to have the best for our community or electorate is to be able to provide more information. And if you can at least supply it to the council, that would be the best decision that we can make. And then we can disseminate it accordingly. If we want to stay quiet with that information, the council will. But if the council wants to utter and say something, then let that be the council's individual decision during their public comment or during their actual commenting. And that's why C2 for me was very important in that predicament. So I appreciate further giving more information in terms of that nature, but I don't think that you should have guessed what council members want or need.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Just for clarification, we're on C2 and that's what you're looking for, a motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to written communications. Approval of California Fire Assistance Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-040, approving portal-to-portal pay and overtime for California statewide mutual aid deployment.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? I'll start with Ms. Jones.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ramirez?
No.
Ms. Gomez?
No, ma'am.
I do have one speaker card, Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. I'm just chiming in my five cents worth, basically. I kind of think you guys will vote in favor of this. I don't have my glasses, so it's a little difficult here. I read the, I just read whatever was on the agenda, not all the backlog of information that you folks have. But I kind of like the sound of it, that mutual aid and reimbursements and all of that. So I would hope you would all vote in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only card that I had. At this time, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 19-040.
Move that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-040.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, I'm noticing the classification title. It has a base rate and then it has an average actual rate or base rate. And I notice that the figures are different. I'm just assuming and inferring from this document that this is a step up of sorts. But other than that, because I don't have prior knowledge of this, I don't understand if that's the correct interpretation of this document in terms of classification titles. Is that the case, Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, I think what you're seeing here in the document is basically just pulling information from our existing table of org and memorializing on this document so that the state, in the event we send firefighters to a state fire, we, they have on file the actual amounts that should be reimbursed to us. Did I say anything wrong there, Chief, in how I described it?
Madam Mayor and Council, City Manager's explanation is correct. They request this information so that the reimbursement amounts are appropriate for each individual organization.
So in other words, this is a step up plan? I mean, you guys totally said something distinct from I did, so I want to make sure that we're understanding each other.
This is copying and pasting the same information that we have in our table of organization for these particular classifications and sharing it with the state on their document.
All right, thank you. No further questions or comments.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D2. Request to approve an award of a tree trimming and maintenance services contract. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the award of a tree trimming and maintenance services contract for Project CC19-058 to West Coast Arborists Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $156,944.
Thank you. At this time, do you have any, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes. How many workers does the city employ currently that deal with our community parks? And this is in association of the tree trimming award, and if it's not, you can clarify. Has the city considered its, considered less contracting out and more in-house capabilities? And has the city done a statistical analysis of at least the last two and a half years to collect data and measure how effective or how beneficial it would be to maintain the money in-house by doing less contracting? And I'm thinking when I say those statements, our part-time crews, which we have part-timers who have been here for two decades. And did staff conduct how this amount of $156,000 would get our part-timers to a full-time status if a statistical analysis was done? And does the current maintenance crew not have the ability or the capacity to do tree trimming services and maintenance services that are being contracted out?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, in general, the answer to the question, does staff analyze and determine the appropriateness and cost-effectiveness of contracting versus hiring FTEs or full-time equivalents? The answer to that is yes. And that's something that was done in relation to this contract several years ago as this contract is providing, I would characterize it as not daily. It's routine, but certainly not daily, to the point where it's more useful for us to rely on a contractor to do the intermittent nature of this type of work in the LMAs and throughout the city. I also must identify, and Public Works Director Doug Matthews can expand on it, that there are some extensive certifications required to be an arborist, and there's a lot of liabilities that go along with it. So it's one of those types of field responsibilities that requires professional expertise, expertise that, to my knowledge, we don't currently have on staff. So therefore, it's certainly been decided that it's better to, in this particular case, have a contract serving that unique need. Mr. Matthews, is there anything more that you'd like to add in that regard?
No, that, excuse me, that's correct. These are professional arborists, and we don't have the qualified staff to, we don't have the certifications and the knowledge and the training and the education in-house. And it does take some specialized equipment and lifts, and you know, there's just a lot to it. There's 8,400 trees out there. And again, they're not done every year. This is on an as-needed basis.
And lastly, I appreciate the comment. However, we did have contractual agreements with the county in terms of fire, but the city decided that fire services belonging locally controlled was best. So taking that same principle, I also can see how we already have, in the city of Victorville, a program for all the employees to be able to take educational courses.
You have 30 seconds.
And I think it's the best way that we can start using the monies that are already pre-allocated for individuals that want to do higher education and encourage these individuals so that they not only stay as part-timers, but actually take advantage of the program that we currently have today. And I don't know if we do have a high retention rate or user of that program as we speak now.
Not that I'm aware of. I think the program that you're alluding to is different in nature, different in nature and not specific to this type of work. We do have programs available for higher education, effectively furthering education into the university systems, getting bachelors in or masters. To my knowledge, this type of work is not the type of work that requires that credentialing, though it does require specialty credentials to understand how trees grow and obviously when they're alive and when they're dead and how to basically manage trees altogether.
And usually, the arborist is degreed in some field of horticulture or something of that nature. But honestly, we don't have full-time work for this person, so it wouldn't make sense to train and employ somebody full-time that we're not going to make full-time use out of.
One else?
I would like to know, how often has this contract previously been given? Is this a common occurrence where it is given out to a company outside the city itself?
Sure. So we actually started this six years ago. We had a five-year contract. It was a one-year contract with four renewable years. The contract came up and we wanted to revise the RFP substantially. And together, Public Works Community Services got together because we both utilized this service and put together a more comprehensive RFP. We put it out and, you know, got three proposers and graded those and were looking to do the same thing again, get it on a one-year with four renewable years, and we would send it out to an RFP again after that.
Thank you. Other questions? No, thank you.
I, let me see, I do not have, I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. If our employees are already part-timers and they've been so loyal to the city of Victorville to give 10-plus years, even 20 years, why are we not encouraging such professional expertise? I know that the city clerk's position was hired on before she had met the prerequisites of holding a bachelor's. And she was encouraged to take that bachelor's, and she will reap the benefits into her retirement. Why don't we offer that to the lower echelons of what an employee is? Our employees should not be categorized as who could and should versus our opportunity to provide them this. This really causes pain to understand that our city does not look for those individuals who take care for the more laborious, don't have to sit here with a typewriter, but those that put in the day's sweat every single day, but they had to still feed their families on a part-time job in this city. This city that we call the great city of Victorville, where we are supposed to be developing programs and services and jobs. If we can't do that for our own employees, how can we provide that for you who is looking for a job outside of a bedroom community to stay here with a good-paying job?
Any further comments? Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Discussion Regarding Library Performance and Services. This is discussion item only, and Mayor Protim Ramirez, will you like to present it?
I would like to say that I made a tour of the Victorville library as well as Hisperia and Apple Valley. I was very impressed by the work that the librarians do here in Victorville. However, there's a but to everything, is that the space allotted in the library is very, very small, little, cramped. They do a wonderful job with the children. The equipment is there, however, we need more. And I understood that the librarian would be here today to speak, and I hope that person would come and explain. I am not against the library. I want it to be better, more effective, and larger. It does a wonderful job with the children. It does offer many programs, and the friends of the library are doing as much as possible. But I believe with the growth of our city that we need to look at the fact that it needs to expand in space so that more can be able to use the facilities. So I say A+ to the staff and for the programs that they do. However, I give a D- to the space that they are working. One thing that caught my eye is that there's one door to enter and the same door to exit. I find that a questionable situation in regards to fire hazard. And I would like very much to say that we should compete, I'm sorry to say this, to compete with Hisperia and Apple Valley, who have probably three or four times a larger space, but not necessarily the effort that our staff puts. I'm just saying that we need to accommodate our city residents with a bigger, more expansive library. And please, let me also note, I was in shock about that particular road that is in front of, off of 7th Street where it says it's not maintained. I could not believe the holes. It was a shock to me. And I would like for us to look into the code enforcement above that particular street that is private, and it is, to me, very unsafe. But again, I applaud the library of the city of Victorville for all its wonderful, wonderful work, especially with the children and the way that it offers. But we need to do much more for the library and its residents. And I wish that if the librarian was here, that they would come and speak in their behalf.
At this time, do council members have any questions of staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. Are we going to have a presentation? Because if we are, they might answer my questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. We're not prepared to provide a presentation this evening, but I do have our city librarian, Mr. George Carter, here. So I wanted to take that opportunity to introduce you all.
I do have some questions then. And I'll hand them to our city manager, and then you can certainly designate further if you wish. Can everyone hear me? There we go. All right. Have we ever thought about opening another library? We have, we have one small library on the end of town and nothing that would be more convenient to the other residents of our community?
So we have, in fact, that was a subject that was contemplated going back to maybe 2005, 2006 timeframe. And the city actually had a goal to build a second library, basically to supplement the existing services, actually to expand the existing services. And the thought process was to have an alternative location to reach other members of the community, make it more accessible to other parts of the city. And in fact, to further that, further that along, the city had gone so far as to acquiring property. We actually owned dirt, and we still own the dirt where the, where it was intended to build that library facility. Of course, that was at a timeframe, a time period when the economy then started to go into a different direction. And the funding available to actually build that just did not exist. So that project never moved forward beyond that stage. I don't know where we left off with that.
So it amounts to money for construction on that, then?
Correct.
Okay. And then I noticed in the reporting, it was made very clear that our library is a city- is a city library and not part of the San Bernardino County branch. What are the pros and cons of being part of the bran, the county branch system?
You know, I can't speak specifically to the pros and/or cons of being in the county system. I can tell you, based upon just the intent back then, when the decision was made to actually transition from county service to city, there was a belief at the council level that we have an opportunity to invest better into the library, certainly invest better into the library than perhaps what was believed to be done by the county system at the time. I believe that was part of a resolution supporting the transition.
Okay. And then the one thing that I noticed, and I, I looked at all of the backup materials as well as the information on the city's website with regard to the library, and the one thing that stood out, a couple of things that stood out very clearly to me is that I am thrilled that we have a continuum of services for the different age levels. That's really good. So, we even have something for our tweens, which is great, and I love the Harry Potter events that you put on, that's fabulous. The one thing that I, I noticed that we don't have is we don't have anything specific for children and adults with disabilities. Has that ever been considered?
I'm not specific, I'm not specifically aware that it's been considered. You know, I would defer to staff to see if they have considered it or have heard that it be considered in the past.
We're always considering programs, but we're limited by the amount of staff we have. Every, all of our programs are run by part-time people, which is pretty unheard of in library services. To consider that, at this point, when we have no other professional staff than, than administrator myself, it would be pretty difficult to pull off. Currently, we've, we just got a resignation letter from one of our key part-time staff and at this time, we're going to have to cancel our computer classes because he runs those at this time. So, until we can replace him and figure out how to better utilize our staff going forward, you know, we're just, we're at capacity. And we run a ton of programs. And Ramita was saying, Ms. Ramirez was saying about competing with Hisperia and other libraries. I think on a pound-for-pound basis, we run more programs than any of the other high-desert libraries and we do it with no full-time staff and with half the size of a building that, of the other libraries.
Okay. And that is all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anyone else?
Yes.
As I recall, I think this is correct, we have five new council people. Since the past council, our councils decided to withdraw from the county-free library system. And if my memory serves me correct, it was because of access to monies through the redevelopment area, redevelopment project area. There had been requests to improve the library system and to improve the size and expand the library system and the current library site was given to the city by Clyde Tatum. And as a result of that building being there, then it's, even when it was operated by the county. Since the City of Victorville withdrew, they acquired land for a library system, but redevelopment is, agency is now gone and we don't have access to the monies. And in the meantime, the county, which is, the county library system has built a new library in Phelan, Hisperia, Apple Valley, and I don't know where else, and I don't know how those sizes compare, but individuals have speculated to me that had the city stayed in the system, there would at least be a new, larger building. I think because, I go on what was in the paper, I wasn't here, we have new council people and we are, I think we should be making decisions that is the best for the, most of the citizens of Victorville. I think it's time that we look into this whole thing again. I can't disagree with the thing that's been said, but on the other hand, and I can't out, I can't second-guess the decisions that were made at the time, but I think this council has an interest in providing the best library services that we possibly can and which, and to do that, we need to have the data, what's available, how much land, what is the cost, what would be the annual operations, can we afford it? I'm not suggesting that we look into joining the county system again, but it's one of the alternatives that should be looked at. And I think we need to address all of it. I'd love to have all the information available about the county, about the library system. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes. Once again, if I'm very repetitive, it's because the issues rise. Part timers, of course, we're not, we stretch the most we can with our part timers, but you can't blame them for trying to get a better job to feed their families in times like these, especially when you're not getting $20,000 a month. Okay? That's not going to happen. It goes to say that the lack of information for the backup material is zero. We're going on by speculation, personal experiences, probably grassroots in terms of council members not having the information, any data, and so it, I don't know how good or how best we serve our community when we don't have something to go by and clench teeth to. So, some of my questions are from either me going there, witnessing, door-knocking, whatever it is. So, does the building have Wi-Fi to everyone for free and must any newcomer register for a card? What are we doing to promote, to promote these book signers and authors to read to children? There's many young children authors that I have met that would be dying to come to the City of Victorville just to read a story. And I contacted the library not too long ago and provided information, but there's, I provided one, but there's multiple young authors. And if we can have that, why not? We're using the best that we can. Does staff have a budget for such calls? When is the last time the li, the library had a survey and why isn't it attached with the performance and service, and services? In order for any one person, in the case of the City of Victorville, yeah, we do have five people who may not have access or need to the library. I don't know how many of us go. I have a 10-year-old, I go to the library with my daughter. I don't know anybody else with their grandkids or whatever, but it goes to say that we need to understand our community and maybe if we're there, we're more to be pressing for this information, whether it be construction in the future or talks about this non-long-distant, Mr. Cox and Mrs. Jones just alluded to, that's possibly what we need to start talking about. Has the community services department reached out once again to these authors? If you can have them there.
Your time is up.
And where is the building going to be built that we purchase? Thank you. We're going to purchase if we are, sorry.
Do you want me to respond? Or? If any author or organization reaches out to the library and they have a good program that is comfortable and reaches our mission, we're happy to accommodate. We had an author just a couple of weeks ago come in and read and present her book. They just have to reach out to the library and if we can accommodate our schedule and with our staff, we're happy to entertain any proposals and programs to that. The library does provide free Wi-Fi to the community, to the library. Anytime you're in the library, you're in range, you can sign right on. We don't even require a password. Those are the two I remember.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as to some of the comments speaking to the location of where the library is going to be, in backing up a little bit, the funding sources, funding has been a critical part of this element and continues to be a critical part of even trying to expand the services, which I think we likely all want to do. Funding is going to be a critical part of that and not just the one-time funding for actually building the new facilities, but then also the operational element of those facilities as well. And right now, like a lot of other programs, the library is funded out of the general fund. Things are getting better. I do envision, after we get done with this budget cycle, sitting down with each of you and start talking about some of those future goals, because we're starting to see now a desire of the council, especially, and maybe it's because things are getting better financially and fiscally for the city, to where we're having increased desire and demands towards whether it's library or parks and recreational services or amenities at the parks or maybe even new parks. I really want to start sitting down and talking with you about identifying those because we're starting to hear them more and more and also talking through what is going to be necessary fiscally to actually get us there. Because again, as we're currently setting, you know, my vision is that the general fund is healthier, especially as we're proposing to set aside more for reserves, but we also know the reality, especially in the budget message that we communicated last week, that revenues, the biggest revenues supporting the general fund are growing at a much slower pace than the expenses are growing. So, you know, we do expect down the road an intersect to where we can't sustain the cost increases on the expense side. So, we've got to look at and have a serious conversation about supplemental revenue sources that can help further some of these programs along to make them more sustainable. So, I don't think necessarily anybody here, certainly on staff, agrees. We agree, in fact, that we need to expand those services. Being able to financially support it is, is key in being able to do that. As to the location and Councilmember Cox's comments, we're actually right on point. There was a time, because we had a redevelopment project area and it was the largest in the state of California and it had an amazing potential to generate revenue in addition to supporting infrastructure needs out at the airport, it also had a flexibility of investing in capital throughout the project area. And certainly, land was one. The property that we acquired is actually just right across the street, just west of us here at City Hall, the vacant lot. There's currently K rails on it. We've used it to kind of facilitate parking for special events. But that was actually the envisioned location and redevelopment was going to be the primary funding source, not just for the acquisition of the dirt, which is already complete, but also for the eventual construction. And that would have been an eligible project expense. Of course, with the wisdom of our great state, redevelopment was abolished and therefore with that went a very critical funding source that could have got us at least to the infrastructural side. That would not have answered the O and M side going forward. We still have that conversation. But I think, that being said, and the conversation I had with the Director of Community Services yesterday, you know, one of the things that we look at, because there are funds becoming more and more readily available, grant opportunities at the state, whether it's for expanding parks, we're actually kind of at a crossroads. We would like to start applying for these, these, these grants and potentially even getting these grants to help increase or improve our infrastructure, whether it's parks or facilities. The issue is the ongoing O and M and do we have the revenue to sustain it? So, we actually find ourselves hesitating and pausing and actually applying for those grants because we don't necessarily know that we've got the sustainable revenue source in place to actually staff, if you will.
Other questions? I guess everyone has spoken.
I make a motion that we continue the discussion of the Victorville's city library in regards to expansion and remodeling the facility for the use of the residents of the City of Victorville.
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is a discussion item only. Perhaps under the request for agenda items, we could take that up?
And I have some cards on this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Madam Mayor.
I'm not sure if it's Veska or Vesna, Lasik.
And I want to thank you for putting the library on the agenda tonight. This is a very dear subject to me. As evident by my accent, I am a naturalized U.S. citizen and I am resident of Victorville for almost 25 years. And I grew up in the third world country, in the town of 20,000 people who, with a beautiful library, that would put our library in Victorville to the shame. And that's wrong, just, just not right. This is the United States of America and, you know, besides the parents and the grandparents, libraries are first place where children acquire love for reading and learning that lasts for a lifetime. And how a library, I could not agree more with Madam Ramirez for your observation. Our library, 9,000 square feet, that serves over 100,000 people, 17 schools with, you know, part-time staff, understaffed, location out of reach for so many of our residents, not public transportation nearby, the first, some kind of bus that comes, you know, rare and between, how you say it, it's on Seventh Street, and I can go so on and on and on. And you should come in the morning before nine o'clock when the library opens, any time of day, in the week, any time of the year, you're going to see the people waiting for that door to be open. And in my opinion, there is not more tangible way of putting our public money, giving back to the community. So, I ask you, like, if our libraries are not worth of investing and what other enterprise is more worthy? So, again, thank you all for your, serving our community and thank you for listening and for putting this, our libraries to your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Valentin Gordina?
Good afternoon, City Council. On behalf of all school-aged children, friends of the library, and concerned residents of Victorville, I'd like to thank you for promptly putting this issue of the library on the agenda for us to speak on. I did do my research on a resolution 05-187 that was handed to the deputy clerk. If you could please pass it to the rest of the council so that we know what we're, what I'm talking about. Can she be allowed to do that, please?
Not at this time because we're already into the discussion.
So, we had a resolution passed by prior council members and just because they are not here doesn't mean that we don't have to honor our commitment to the community that we had made. When we were, when our library was county library, our elected officials at the time, Councilmen Almen, Cabrealis, Cadwell, Hunter, and Rothschild, made the decision that it was in our best interest to have the city adopt the library. And I don't believe that just because they are not sitting up in the city council, that our responsibility to the residents has gone with them. I think it still belongs here and I think we should address it. Since then, our city has grown that now we need more than one library. Building a new library is great, but we also need to take care of the library that is currently being used because we do not want to deprive that part of town of a library. We actually need probably three libraries because of the size of our city and it's still growing. I invite every council member, I invite everybody here in the city council to visit our library, to visit our neighbor's library, so they can get an idea of what it is that we're talking about. So, thank you very much.
Do you have a copy of what you have? I want to follow you. She's not willing to give me the information.
She's taking up your time. Continue.
I'm just following what the mayor told me to do. Just give me the information.
You're losing your time. Continue.
The, the city clerk will be directed to pass out the resolution. This is my only copy and I need to keep it for my file. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valentin. Kate Page?
I want to thank the city for the maintenance of our library. The grounds are looking great. I've even heard people comment on how nice the grounds look. We got new carpet, we got new paint. As far as I know, the air conditioning and the heating's working. As far as I know, the air conditioning and the heating's working. And the only thing is, that I'm sorry didn't happen, was our military plaques, where it should be put in place around our flagpole, to commemorate our military and our veterans. And it hasn't been done. And I was kind of hoping it would be done before Memorial Day, but it didn't get done. Hopefully, by next year. You all, I'm sure, think education is the most thing, best thing that we can do. And the library is an educational facility. It's not a building that houses books, that you bip in, read a book, and bip out again. It has programs for toddlers on up. It has computer programs in English, in Spanish. We have tutoring. We have programs for the little ones, for preschoolers. And even in the preschool section, the mothers are learning. They're getting educated, simply because they learn things that they can take home and do with their children. So we're even educating the parents while we're educating the little ones. But the main thing is, it's an educational facility that is needed. And if you get this resolution, you'll realize, it would be really, really nice to have a larger library, and it would be really, really nice to have it built, whether from this ground up or an existing building, but have it on the other side of the freeway. Our little library does a booming business, but it only can do so much. And it is only accommodating a small, small portion of the Victorville community. The rest of the community is being lost. And there are just, our librarian has ideas.
Your time is up.
Galore for the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Amy Stanton.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager. My name is Amy Stanton. I'm going to thank you for putting the library on tonight's agenda. Our library does an amazing job providing services with the resources that it has available, as has already been noted. An investment in our library system is an investment in the future of our citizens and our community. I use the phrase "library system" because a city the size of Victorville needs more than just one library to ensure access to books, computers, and educational programs. The people on the west side of Victorville really don't have ready access to library services. For example, the Friends of the Victorville Library offer or deliver promotional information about the summer reading program to all the elementary schools in Victorville, but the distance and traffic reduce the likelihood that many on the west side of the city will actually participate. The plans for a new library were put on hold during their last recession. It's time to revisit the plans and start seriously budgeting. I understand that the city has looked into using retail space for a library. That would be a wonderful start. And if there isn't enough money in the budget for staffing full-time, perhaps the hours could be limited to afternoons and weekends. It's important to get started and do something soon. Another option would be to have a mobile library. It really doesn't have to be mobile all the time, but it could move to different locations during the week. For example, it could be at Hook Recreation Center two afternoons a week, and at other parks like Los Haciendas, Mesa Linda, and Eagle Ranch, one morning or afternoon a week during the summer. Please provide equal access to library services to all Victorville residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Fargetti.
Yeah, I'm one of those book-reading type people. Anyway, I'm a very educated man. I don't see any books on nuclear fission, or building your own atomic reactor, or whatever, in the library, but it doesn't really gear towards that extreme of scientific stuff. But it does have a lot of good qualities, okay? And I enjoy going to the library, and I think one time I did have a card and checked out a book or two, mostly comics. I'm just kidding. So, the one thing why I don't go is where, like Dr. Rita says, the potholes, okay? One of my cars hit a pothole. I've never seen it since. So, and then also, the library is so small that it only has the ABDs, the alphabets all messed up. But the one biggest thing is concerned, besides the potholes and the most obvious thing, it is a good resource for people educated that want to move forward, and it should be highly invested in, okay? Where people could get a chance, where you have a lot of homeless people, you have a lot of uneducated people, and this is, you know, a very uneducated town, but this is a resource where somebody can get out of this hole, okay? But the other thing, why I don't go, is the safety. Public safety, I mean, you've got hoodlums in there looking in cars, you know, trying to break in, this and this. Who wants to go? Okay? I don't want to bring some of my nice cars over there and park it. They'll be stolen. It's ridiculous. You know, it's a very unsafe area. It's not maintained, and like Dr. Rita says, you know, what are you doing? I mean, do you understand what you're doing here? You don't see that obvious? Okay? What's wrong with you?
So, we just discussed the sustainability of our city manager's salary for the next few years. I believe, as many would agree, that the sustainability of our part-time employees merit the same regard of sustainability and financial hood. Luckily, we have an educated 20-plus year with a master's degree city manager who has made it to the top dog, so to speak, for the city of Victorville, for his loyalty and decision-making with the status quo, costing us, unfortunately, millions of dollars in what I would hope are mistakes and not intentional hits. My proposal is to have the livelihood. Why not render out, why not render our part-timers the same regiment? I find it unprudent to withhold information from the audience that is meant to make decisions after, whenever after, that does happen. On too many occasions, I have witnessed the failure to provide any documentation from our public commenters. I want to publicly state that Councilmember Gomez, that's me, I will always accept your direct information as a public commenter. There's no need to go to the city clerk. I will take it immediately to follow along your thought process. With me, you're not required during your public comments, again, to provide that information.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, do not interrupt me. I have three minutes. I have a minute and a half. You may want me to consider my, do not interrupt me. You don't do it to anybody else. Don't do it to me either. I don't interrupt you either. Yes, I am. I can talk of whatever I want, okay? You are continuously interrupting me. You need to stop. You are the chair, okay? Hold decorum, okay?
Five-minute recess.
Okay, well, I still got my three minutes when I come back. Bye.
We will continue. The five minutes are up. Time starts now.
Well, is she?
Her time's running.
Okay. Do I start it?
Time is running.
So, I will leave off where I was rudely interrupted. I'm not going to waste any more time. So, I find it prudent, unprudent, to withhold information from the audience that is meant to make decisions until after, whenever this happens to happen. On too many occasions, I have witnessed the failure from the city clerk to provide any documentations to any of the council members, even when we're out of session. I've been paying close attention. And I want to publicly state that I, as a council member of this city, will always be willing to accept your direct information. You don't have to go through the city clerk. With me, you're not required to do this. That is a lack of self-respect. What this means is, it shows that we're not willing to listen, we're uncaring, and we are not processing the information that someone took the time to spend three minutes up here, but probably an hour, to perform something and give each one of us the piece of information. That's unfair to the community. We shouldn't leave that to them.
Those were all the cards that I had. So, I'll leave it up to you, Ms. Mayor Protim. This was just for discussion, so.
Right, and if I may, Madam Mayor, it sounds like our Mayor Protim wanted to have a further discussion on that at another meeting. Did I understand you correctly?
Did you want to continue this?
Yes, I do.
So.
I want to make a motion that we need to just continue this discussion on the library of the city of Victorville, in order to find out what would be the best solution to what I am speaking. We are not meeting the needs of the residents, because it is far too small. The programs are there, everything is there. It's a question of expansion. It's a question of remodeling. Whatever it takes, we need to meet the needs and concerns of the residents. It's being used very, very well, exceptionally well. But we are not a small city, and we are not going to be any smaller today than tomorrow. So we need to be looking ahead and making certain that we meet the educational needs, concerns of our citizens. After all, they pay our, they pay for everything. Why can't we not do something for them? I am so sorry. I am so frustrated. I hate to say it, but when I was 20 years of age at Chapman University, I was paid to do an elementary library for Laguna Beach. My PhD is in reading. And I move that we, I make a motion that we continue this discussion of how we can resolve the situation that we have in regards to the city library, because the growth of a city demands that we meet and give opportunities of learning in every possible way, and we need to take care of this today and not tomorrow. I am sorry that I am negative.
So, and not taking away from any of those remarks at all, but this is a discussion-only item, and certainly, it would probably be most appropriate to make that motion when we have the request for new agenda items.
Under E3, correct.
Point of clarification?
Yeah, she can make her motion.
Well, no, it's actually at the discretion of the council, and it was put on the agenda for discussion. But, okay, never mind. If it's going to be brought up in a second, it's a great idea. We need to do it, whether we do it here or on another item, it just needs to be done. So, thank you. I'm sorry.
When we get to E3, then you can make your motion. All right. I don't have any other cards, so there's no motion on this one here. So, I move on to D4, correct?
Correct.
Approval of the city's 2019 updated sewer system management plan. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-041 to approve, adopt, and recertify the city's 2019 updated sewer system management plan.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? The staff, I'll start with Ms. Jones.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Questions? No? Jim?
No.
Gomez?
Yeah, so by chance, is this item connected to the IWWTP? Meaning our sewer plant that aids the wastewater production from Snapple Dr. Pepper Plant?
No, this just deals with our sewer collection system. It does not deal with our IWWTP.
Okay, so my next question is, would you please clarify and bring clarity to this item and its connection to SCLA then? If there is any connection, and if not?
The only connection to SCLA is, SCLA also has a sewer collection system, which is part of the overall collection system of the city. So, it does deal with that part of it. This document deals with the entire collection system in the city.
So then, does that, does it have to do with BBWRA?
No, this document really doesn't have anything to do with BBWRA.
Okay, so is staff prepared to do a presentation that takes two to three minutes for understanding of the waste, this is sewer system management?
We weren't planning on giving a presentation, but we're available for any questions that the council may have.
Well, yeah, can you clarify then, since it's no association to BBWRA or to IWWTP, which is what I would associate? So I need clarification as to the sewer system management. I know the CCTVs, we spent an exuberant amount, and I'm thinking La Haunted, and I'm thinking all these processes underground. Is there a connection with that?
This document deals with the operation, the management of our entire sewer collection system. Our sewer collection system is a system of pipes that take all of our wastewater to either BBWRA or to our treatment plant, and there are approximately 437 miles of sewer mains or sewer pipes, and so this document deals with the management of that entire system. It deals with the operations and maintenance. It also deals with if we have capital projects to make repairs or replacements. It's a very comprehensive document that covers all the activities the city does to operate and maintain our sewer collection system.
Would you mind repeating the first portion? I see the connection now with BBWRA. As it flows, then it would connect to the interconnects at BBWRA.
So, our system is almost entirely gravity pipes, which means the wastewater flows down the pipes without pumps. There's a very small portion of our system that has pumps to force the water through the mains, and then they continue to flow by gravity. So, most of our flows go to the regional plan at BBWRA. A portion of our flows... A portion of our flows from SCLA in a western part of the city flow to our city plant, which is the industrial wastewater treatment plant. But this document doesn't deal with those treatment plants. This document deals only with our sewer collection system.
Do you know how many, I'm assuming we have industrial, commercial, and a residential connected to that portion? Or maybe not all of the cities, but a portion of it?
Yes, we have all those uses connected to our collection system.
Um, would you mind providing, I don't know if you have a type of organizational chart? This is a new piece of information that I was associating with. Clearly, I said IWWTP and BBWRA. But I've never heard this side of the story. Do you have a chart that would flow and show something like that that you can place in my inbox?
If I might, there is one, actually located on page 235 of the agenda.
I'm not asking for the organizational chart in terms of the people, per se, and it does city council, city manager. But the intricacies of what you just spoke, it would, the diagram in my head looks like this. You have industrial, commercial, and residential, and they're flowing. And then they go to BBWRA, then they flow externally to go to IWWTP. This does not relay that information.
Um, the information that I was speaking to here was answering your question about an org chart. And what this actually does is identifies the segment of the organization, the entire city organization, that's dedicated specifically to serving the collection system and doing the work that's actually identified and specified in the SSMP.
I'd have to use imagination, just as I did to place it here, 'cause this is, I don't understand this chart. I mean, you, this is the first time you've uttered this.
Your time is up?
Director positioning. So I, if you would supply that, that would greatly help me understand that portion of it.
Anyone else? Questions? No? Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards for this item here. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
I move adoption of resolution 19-041.
Second?
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. Just, just, just a quick shout out towards approving this item. I, I found the background information on this item very, very helpful. I thought it was very concise and precise and made my decision much easier. Thank you so much to staff.
Any further comments?
Yes, and I, I would like to reiterate the same concept. You have a lot of detail in your reporting, but the detail to me makes no sense if I don't understand the intricacies of the basics of what it is that you're speaking of. So for me, as a council member, it would have helped to associate a very simple graph. So when someone, like my audience, comes and says, "Blanca, how does this function?" I can at least provide one or two sentences, 'cause I know staff is always busy. And so although I do appreciate the intricacies, I need to start from the basics in order to be, understand what these measurements and what these standards are. I'm not the expert here. I try to be as much as possible. But that simple basicness of what I've requested in my inbox, I think would, would clearly allow me to understand further the complexity that I'm looking at this reporting.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Now we move on to item D5. Approval of 44th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the 44th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract Number 94-909-A-44 for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, and authorize the mayor or her designee to process all documents required for this agreement and approve the memorandum of understanding by, in between the city of Victorville and the Victor Valley Union High School District for the same period, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the agreement and approve the MOU by, in between the city of Victorville and the Victor Elementary School District for the same period, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for this agreement.
Thank you. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of staff on this item?
None for me, thank you.
No.
Yes. I'm assuming now with the 44th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract, it's not just, there's three items, A, B, and C. Two of them have to do with the school district, but the first one doesn't. I'm looking at it, and it's, it says there's sworn officers, 96 of them. And so I have, I have a complaint letter from a resident which I'm going to submit, and I'll give a copy to Captain Bessenger. So this is for the city clerk. If you could pass it down to her so she could submit it as part of the file? I would appreciate it in today's file. And I'll be handing this to our captain. There's a complaint. And I've said this on multiple occasions, not because I have the issue, but because a lot of the residents that I come across have certain complaints. And so I wanna make sure that what I'm putting here today, it has nothing to do with the school district, per se. But it does have to do with what people have called "school-to-prison pipeline", where we have a militarized force of individuals who abuse their power and authority. And so this complaint here that I'm gonna provide to you is on the record, but I don't wanna take it out of context, 'cause I don't wanna be called by any of the council members saying that you can't speak of something of this nature because it has nothing to do with this item, which perhaps it might not. But it's very sensitive information. But it's also on the record. And so I don't know how we will be dealing with this. If anybody could clarify, I don't, I know the city manager doesn't have this information either with him, so that he could be like, "Oh, no, it's not relevant", because it is only strictly to city, to the Victor Valley Union High School and to the elementary. But I do see the word "law enforcement", which triggers this reporting.
Does anybody else have anything? I do have two speaker cards. The first one is Deanne Hodgins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Number one, I am thrilled that Victor Valley High School District is getting two SROs. I think this is only like maybe four years that they've had SROs. Um, Victor L. has had them for a good number of years. Victor Union High School District has not. I've been real active in Victor High School District for, I don't know, 50 years? A long time, as a student and then on. I read the backup material online about this, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but I just, I, I would like to find out, maybe, maybe I'm asking the wrong, the wrong entity. It said that the SRO's chain of command would be to report to the sergeant, the lieutenant, and then the captain, I believe. I'm not good with that, but I think that's what it said. There was nothing in what I read that indicated who the SRO would report to at the district. And I, and I know that the SROs are not assigned specifically to schools, because there are more schools than there are SROs. And so they're in kind of a roving mode. My best guess is likely the high schools get about 75% of the attention, would probably be my best guess. But I just, I'm just wondering, how does the officer contact the principal when they are there? Is there a schedule that the, that the officer is at Victor Valley High School, therefore then they are at Hook? And when they are at Silverado, then they are at Sims? And, and possibly UP? And, you know, that kind of a setting? Because it said that 100% of their time was supposed to be spent at the school and around the school. And it, I, they're just, I didn't know how any of the personnel at the school would know how that person was there. And I have asked that question of, not of the board and not of anybody, but just of individual people that I know at the district. And there doesn't seem to be an answer. So maybe I'm asking the wrong entity. But if not, if it, if I am asking the wrong entity, let me know, and maybe I could ask them, and I'd get a clearer, clearer picture of that. I have also heard, and this is rumor, and this is not, you know, a lot of, although I do think there's some disgruntled people, that indicates that the SRO, if there is an emergency outside the school, the SRO's responsibility is to, to go there versus be at the school or the surrounding area. I'm not certain how that translates in 100% of their time. I thank you, and I really do appreciate that the, that the district is doing this, that you guys are, are approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Martin.
Good evening, your honor, council. Let me introduce myself. 63-year-old, in a couple weeks, white woman from Victorville. Here I am. But just my five cents worth on it, having worked for a school district, retired from a school district. I worked for a neighboring jurisdiction or, you know, district. Actually, I might as well say it, 'cause Ms. Jones knows, Adelano. And for a period of time there, let me tell you, those kids were something else. I could tell you stories that you wouldn't even believe. But for a period of time, and I don't know how much time, we did have a school resource officer. And I'm telling you, I'm, I, I totally support this. I totally support this, because, I mean, if you could have more than just one here, one here, one here, and one here, that would be great. Because I guess usually how I sum everything up is, I know where I'm living. That's pretty much how I sum it up. And I know that kids today are not what they were 30, 40, 50 years ago in terms of respect for their elders. Got one right here. Respect for their elders, politeness, courtesy. That pretty much sums it up. So we have a lot of problematic children. I don't think too highly of most of them walking around Victorville these days. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, those are all the cards that I have. Therefore, I need a motion in a second. I need a motion, second?
Oh, sure, Madam Mayor. I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, it's not clear to my understanding why Schedule A Law Enforcement Services contract is rendered here. I wanna make sure that I'm not voting for something that I'm not clearly understanding. I, I'm going to presume that the 44th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract is just basically including for Victor Valley Union, and that's why we need to have that scheduled. That's my understanding. If it's not, I don't wanna vote something in this level, because I have submitted something sensitive. There is an internal complaint that has been made against the Victorville Department with whom this particular resident has taken is, in, issue. Um, I know, please, Captain Bessenger, you have. If it's not conformed, let me know as soon as possible. My phone number is preferable, so we can get this resident squared away into how to provide this internal complaint. Make sure we're assisting her in the right direction.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye, because my question was not answered.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez, voting no.
Now we move on to item D6. Consideration for the proposed new employment agreement for the city manager. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council reviewed the terms of a city manager agreement with Keith C. Metzler. It is a recommendation that the city council consider approval of the proposed new employment agreement to the city manager.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? I'll start with Ms. Ramirez. Jones?
No, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cox? Ms. Gomez?
Yes. Approximately, what's the income gross and net that the city manager takes home monthly?
I'd have to get my calculator out. I think the information's in the staff report. It's the 249, 120 divided by 12 would be the, be the gross.
So you don't know how much you take home monthly, gross or net? That's, that's, I'm not trying to put you on this.
I think that's private information.
No, it's not.
The net is private.
The contract is public, ma'am.
No, the contract is, but I don't think your net pay is public information.
Okay, well, then let's just stick with whatever the gross. I mean, those terminologies, to me, I get them mixed all the time. So, contract is public. Okay, thank you. The next one is, what does your salary and benefits include verbatim for the city manager?
Uh, the salary is, again, outlined right there on page one of the staff report. The value to include the benefits are also outlined there. In terms of what those benefits are, there's a product of, no different than any other city employee. There's a product of retirement paid for by the city. There's a component of benefit for health allowance. Those are primarily the, the benefits that, that are included in that number.
So then, then could I, could I say, I mean, you're very vague, and so I'm trying to learn what benefits are in terms of not just your health and, and pay. But I'm assuming outside activities, automobile, retirement, which is what you stated, dues, subscriptions and licenses, professional development, general expenses, club memberships, cellular phone? I don't know if indemnification even qualifies, but are those pretty much called benefits?
Uh, I wouldn't call those benefits, a couple of which you outlined are offset of reimbursements, basically to offset expenses. For example, cellphone and auto expenses. Um, tho, those are amounts paid for by the city to me for my personal use of my personal vehicle and my personal cellphone.
Okay, and are you willing to take a pay cut in your monthly salary? If so, how much? In the SEC case, how much money did the city spend in defending you? And how much did council make better decisions and then direct a city manager, such as yourself, for this medium-sized company?
Madam Mayor, I'm not going to answer that question at this time.
You don't have to. That's totally out of context.
No, it's not out of context. And he, and he wishes not to choose to answer, and that's fine. There's no pressure here. It's not out of context. I can ask as many questions as I want or can. Those were all the level of questions that I wanted to ask.
Everything's outlined in the contract.
Well, then, does everybody have the contract? Do you have it in front of you? How many people, raise your hand? One, two? And I suppose all staff has access to it? Okay, two audience member. I'm just trying to make a point that our community needs to know what we're doing, what we have. That, that's it. I'm not trying to put people on the spot.
I, it, anyone else have anything?
I would like to remark regarding the contract that those items that have been stipulated are very normal and regular in all contracts regarding administration or administrative. Let me say that they are not out of the ordinary and are considered, in some sense, a traditional contract. So I, I find fault with the dis, this discussion, because I have just approved another contract for another administrator, and it was almost the same. And therefore, let me say that from what I have seen and from what I have read and where I've been and how many contracts I have approved of presidents of community colleges, this is not out of the ordinary. So please understand that we were very, very concerned about what we did. We agreed upon, most of us, as to what was expected. And therefore, I find no fault with this contract.
Thank you. I feel the same way, because that is exactly the way it is. Uh, I, other question?
No.
Okay, I do have some cards here. I have Ramiro Rodriguez.
Thank you. And it is private, is not private information. Transparent California, transparent Texas, it's all public information for public officials. Maybe if he works on the side at some burger joint, whatever, then that's, that's private information. But continuing to what's, what's happening right now with the suggestion of hiring, rehiring. $19.6 million was spent defending against this lawsuit, the SEC lawsuit. $8.6 million alone, just alone, to defend him. And his salary is going to be $316,000. That's what he's going to be getting a year, which comes out to $26,400 a month, $6,600 a week, $1,650 a day. So now, here's the thing. This is the lawsuit that was filed in, what, 2013? Now, the lawsuit, we're coming up on a really good lawsuit now, coming up right now. We have all the defendants here from 2013 are now suing the city, are now going to sue the city. And one of the things in the contract for Mr. Metzler is very, in Section 19, indemnification, in which where the employer will promise, will compromise any such claim or suit and will pay the amount of any settlement or judgment rendered. That means when these guys come suing, and he's going to be one of them, can he be sued? And he's immediately working for the city. Now, he's not going to pay it. The city is going to pay it because it's on his contract. The rules have changed now. There's four, there's four lawsuits. There's two against the city and two against the airport. So that's one of the things right there that's going to be very clear about that. You know, it happened. He got sued. He got sued for, what was it, embezzlement, fraud, and investor fraud? You know, it's, it's, it's just, it happened, whether he was the main guy. But think about it right now. It's, it's, it's very difficult to see any other ways. He has that on his, on his record. You know, he might not, he might not have been found guilty, but he still wasn't declared innocent of all the charges. And so there's, there's plenty of people out there that can do this job, but he carries, he carries quite a satchel with him. And when that suit comes up with those other, with those other people suing the city, he's going to be named on them. And there's a clear loss, the city, us, we're going to pay that money. We already paid $19.6 million, $8.6 million to him. Where does it stop? Where does it stop? Where does it stop?
Maggie Martin.
Good evening again, Your Honor, counsel. Yeah, he doesn't have anything against Mr. Metzler. Right. I'm not feeling that, I'm not thinking that, and I know she does. And what irritates me the most is I've been coming to these council meetings regularly before she was even on this council, and we're talking about something that occurred over here with the city involving Mr. Metzler as a defendant in lawsuit that was three years before she was even here and these people back here were even around. So I would propose to you the following. They ain't got nothing. That's why they continually dig up ancient history. And I heard the gentleman read the statistics. Well, check this out, gentlemen. You don't have to be declared innocent or guilty. It's called a settlement to avoid further litigation. So I hear a lot of ignorance in a variety of, you know, those camps. So I, as far as Mr. Metzler, I'm going to tell you what. I, I think it's a salary that's commensurate with the responsibility that he has running a city. And, and he certainly had his run for his money right here, right here. So, you know, I'm surprised he doesn't, he's working on full gray hair, but it's not there yet. But I support him. And, and I would not want to be in his position with that there for a million dollars a month. There's no way. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna Hudgens.
Dr. Ramirez, I really appreciate what you had to say because I too have been on boards, I too have approved contracts, and there's absolutely nothing out of line with this contract, nothing at all. So I appreciate your saying that, and I really appreciate that you see it that way. As far as having a copy of his contract, all you have to do is go to the city website, click on Agenda, and click on Backup Materials. Anybody can look at it. They can print it. They can bring it on their phone. It's not hidden information. It's not information that's not intended to be public. It is public. As far as his take-home pay is concerned, that's his business. What does he take out for his personal investments or for whatever else? That's his business. It is, we do have Transparent California, and we know what his salary is, and we know what the other costs are involved with having him as our city manager. It is absolutely not out of line, and we need somebody who knows the job. And Victorville's growing, and Victorville's got a lot of problems, and I want somebody who knows their job, knows their business, and has been here for a while. Not as long as I have, but have been here for a while, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Those are all the cards that I have. At this time, I need a motion in a second to approve the proposed new employment agreement to the city manager. So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yeah, I'm submitting the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm submitting the United States District, Central District of California against the city of Victorville, SCLA, so forth, so forth. Keith Metzler, please provide that in our records so it's public. It's come to my attention that furlough days have affected 100% of our city's workers' disadvantages and our part-timers. I can't fathom how it can even be, how it can even be consignable to know that we have a part-time employee in this city who's worked under the city pay for over 20 years is not being offered full-time job services. What's the worst part of this description, in my opinion, is our parks, our libraries, who affect the most vulnerable and interject the best that they can with literacy programs or services. I would like not only that the city council and its administration and its staff to start looking at our community services department and all other departments where part-time staff have acquired at least five years and propose something where they can have a livable wage and probably a step up to a full-time job in those positions. And not just the augmentation. We should probably put aside the 36 hours, and if the manager proposes not to have an increase in his approximately $20,000 a month and an extension in his contract for retirement, I don't believe that it's questionable that it would be a livable wage for those people that take care of our parks. Remember, $1.2 million just go to one park, the golf course. I think we can do better. We can probably supply more jobs. Also, there is insufficient, there is sufficient budget to cover the salary cost for the remainder of the current fiscal year, 1920, to reflect the annualized amount. That's the fiscal impact. So we have enough for our city manager to get his cut of the pie. But what about those part-time workers? We're not talking about them in depth.
Have a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was submitted? I heard you say the city, the base, and Keith Metzler. Keith Metzler is sued again? Is it a brand-new suit?
No, I don't believe so. For the record, the SEC dismissed Keith Metzler entirely from that lawsuit. He's not a party to that lawsuit or any of the lawsuits that we discussed on closed session today.
Yeah, so what is all this about?
Not a part of anything. Why do it? Unless you hate somebody.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, first, I want to say thank you for your continued support. It's very much appreciated. It certainly makes it easier to know that there is support from the council with respect to my leadership, because certainly you've got a big organization here, 430-plus or minus, that are looking to me for leadership. And so I certainly appreciate your confidence because that actually gets seen by the rest of the organization, and it really helps us focus and move towards accomplishing your goals on a daily basis. I would like to say, I think interestingly, I have been here for a long time. I think people know that. And I'm very proud of actually having started here. I actually started here with the city in 1994 as a part-timer in, not the Community Services Department, because we called it the Parks and Recreation Department back then. And so, you know, I've been thankful over the years because this city has, not only for me, but in my personal case, it provided me with nothing but opportunity to succeed over the years. It's done that for all of its employees as the city has valued its employees as long as I've been here. So I think first I wanted to obviously say thank you for that support. I feel like I am extremely connected to this community. Obviously, I grew up here, so I talk to people, and I actually speak to them as if this was my community. I run it in a way where I believe I have an interesting and unique opportunity to feel like I know what this community needs because I'm invested here. I grew up here and still live here. But I think going forward, and the reason for the contract extension, I just want to be open and clear about it. You know, first, I was very particular about not wanting additional compensation, believing that we have accomplished a lot over my first year of working with you and leading your team. But as I look forward, especially as we're preparing for the budget coming up, and as I look forward and I continue, and I mentioned it earlier, continue to hear increasing demands for our services, whether it's police, whether it's recreational, whether it's library, you name it, I mean, we can go on and on. The demands upon our services are growing, and the goals are monumental at a point in time where certainly we've got some, some needs to address, how we're going to fund that going forward. These goals that I'm talking about don't get accomplished overnight, don't get accomplished over one year or two years. These are things that we're going to have to be talking about for many, many years. So for me, I want the opportunity, the best opportunity I can, because I believe I can get you there. But I want the best opportunity to be able to, over the course of time, achieve those goals and not be worried too much about contract and having to sit here through a conversation like this and deliberate on a contract. I want to focus on your job, and, and the way I view the world is some of those goals and objectives that we're going to be talking about very closely. You're going to need somebody that is committed over a longer period of time. I want to be committed for that longer period of time so we can all get there together. So this contract was more about trying to make a contractual relationship with you to see you through what's going to be quite a few years to achieve some fairly significant goals. And I look forward to being a part of those challenges and helping you, helping you get there. So with that, I think the most important thing, despite the numbers that are thrown out, there's no salary increase over the previous year, and it's all about giving an additional term so that we can be confident that we're going to be working together for many years to come to achieve the goals.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, I had comments. I don't know if I want to comment now after, after that, because you, you pretty much said everything I wanted to say. Just to bring the point home again, and I agree with what Mayor Protem Ramirez said earlier, this, this contract, and an audience member, there is nothing out of the ordinary with this contract at all. I have, I have reviewed hundreds of contracts like this over my professional career. This is very typical. What is being viewed as perks aren't really perks. They're, they're designed to provide a certain benefit to our community, to enhance his ability to do his job for all of us. I do think we need to take very seriously the fact that Mr. Metzler's not asked for a raise. And it doesn't matter how much he's making now, to not ask for a raise is, is a sacrifice. And I appreciate it, and it tells me that his investment in our community is heartfelt and real, and I appreciate that. It's particularly difficult, and I've said this over the course of many, many years, for any CEO of a public agency to work with a five- or seven- or even nine-member board or council because effectively their boss changes every two years. And you've got to be a certain kind of a person to be able to deal with that because dynamics change a lot. Mr. Metzler has navigated to new council members, I think, very well. I think Mayor Protem Ramirez would probably agree with that, and I appreciate it. He has made us feel very welcomed, the rest of the council has as well, and staff here at the city has. So I think that's really a testament to the good work that our city manager is doing. He's very thoughtful and intentional about his work. He's deliberative, and he thinks about the long-term effect and impact of every decision he makes. So I am definitely in favor of this agreement and look forward to many, many more years working with Mr. Metzler. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So I'm going to finish my time in commentary. I wish that our former contracted employees who were a city of Victorville contracted and had their contracts severed would have the opportunity to have come here, but based on their contracts, they could not have come in front of city council to state the privilege that Mr. Metzler has. Too bad. Policy and contracts got in the way. The city of Bell was also reasonable. He was a manager until salaries and legalities got in the way. So I can't say what Ms. Jones says or what Mr. Cox says. You can pull all my emails. They're very hostile, every single one of them, with the exception of very few. We've probably gotten better with that communication and that, that cooperation. Hopefully, it gets better, but pulling my emails, you'll see the interaction between both him and I. It's, it's, it's almost like wearing gloves. And it's very unfortunate because the way I think, he probably thinks I'm trying to attack him, which I'm not, I'm just, I'm not. I'm just forthcoming in what I see in the community, and I say it how I see it based on the community voice. And when you pull up my emails, you will see exactly what I mean, and it's unfortunately that, and it's unfortunate that I have to use you as my electorate to show you what someone in my persona can go through if you are elected in this position and you are boisterous. If not, be quiet and meek, and believe me, everything will be smooth sailing. But this is not to attack Mr. Metzler whatsoever, is to expose things that I am seeing as an internal person here, and you guys can witness it too.
Is there any further comment?
I just, I just need to clarify something because I, I nodded when, when Councilmember Gomez said that the emails are hostile, and I want to make sure that my view of that is that it's hostile on one side. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm glad you can speak on your behalf. You weren't speaking for Mr. Metzler. I think he could have the opportunity to say that it's not hostile.
I was speaking to the fact that I had nodded, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't give the people the wrong impression.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to public comments. Do we need to read a statement or not at this time? Did you need to read the statement or not? Okay. I have quite a few cards. I can still keep them at three minutes. The first card that I have is Jennifer Neri. After Jennifer will be Christine Quick. That's the last name, Quick. I didn't mean Quick.
Hello, I also have some data for, should I give it to the city clerk? Or you guys?
What is it?
It's, it's a report. It's an assessment that we conducted.
We won't be able to read it now, but you can.
Oh, yeah, I'm at your discretion. I'm in at your.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Garcia, council members and city staff. I am Jennifer Neri, a resident of Old Town and the community organizer for Root. The Reviver Old Town Coalition conducted a survey of Old Town, of Old Town residents on their perspective on the street lighting in the neighborhood as well as street safety and parking along with the, along the commercial corridor. The goal of the survey is to collect data in order to help guide investment into the neighborhood that is reflective of the community's priorities and needs. When surveying the community, it became evident that residents would like to see the improvement of lighting in the alleys prioritized. We would like our city council representatives to The goal of the survey is to collect data in order to help guide investment into the neighborhood that is reflective of the community's priorities and needs. When surveying the community, it became evident that residents would like to see the improvement of lighting in the alleys prioritized. We would like our city council representatives to consider this data as they develop Phase Two of the lighting improvement plan with the consultants and city staff. When surveying the community, traffic speeds have come up as a serious concern that affect the residents' overall safety. Per the Old Town Pacific Plan, reducing the lanes on Seventh Street from four to two will have an impact on traffic speeds, and therefore make the residents' life overall safer. We would also like for you all to consider using Measure One monies to fund on-street parking on Seventh Street for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. We would also like to ask you all to prioritize the needs of the residents and honor their requests for additional lighting, especially in the residential alleys in the Old Town neighborhoods. I brought a poster to give you a visual of the dark alleys in Old Town. And this is it. If you can look at the first two pictures are of the dark alleys. And these are, all of these alleys are on A Street, okay? And, but these two first ones are of the darkest of the alleys. And this last, these last two pictures, these ones, is the alley that is between Seventh and Sixth Street. And it's off of, between A and Forest. It's right there behind the Santa Fe Trading Company. And those lights are like Ford individual lights that are attached to a building that's the school building. Just to give you guys a notice of how nice these lights are and how they light up the whole alley. If you get a chance, you know, we drive by there and you can see how bright they are compared to the darker alleys. And so, all I'm just trying to say is if, you know, that how simple the small difference can make, and it's really nice, and that we appreciate your time, and we thank you all. And we do really love the LED lights. Those are magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Christine Quick, and after Christine, Cynthia Gomez.
I'm Christine Quick, resident of Old Town Victorville, member of Root. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of Old Town that we really need to prioritize, the needs of the residents. We need to help brighten up the streets, and especially, there is a long alley between A Street and D Street, and it's extremely dark, and there is much suspicious activity going on there at all hours of the night. But at night, it's really scary. And they've been vandalizing the place and leaving gang tattoos, tags around. And if there is more lighting, there will be less criminal activity. Criminals do not like to be seen, and they like to work under the cover of darkness. As they've been frequenting my alley very much during the last couple nights, it's not bright out there. So, I would humbly ask that you help us feel safer by providing us with affordable lighting, and especially in the alleys. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Cynthia Gomez, after Cynthia, Ruth Cortova.
Hello, good evening, everyone. No relation to Councilmember Gomez, so please don't count that against me, okay? But I'm here because I'm an owner of a building in downtown. I actually own 15604 Seventh Street. And it is a commercial, it's actually a mixed-use. It's commercial, and it has a residential element in the back or had. I'm here to go on record due to the fact that I haven't really had cooperation since I owned that property, and even the previous owner is what I got from them. And there have been multiple plans submitted. We have gone back and forth, and I've requested to meet with development many of times, always been rejected. So, now, I just, I even reached out to several council members. The only one that did call back was Ms. Blanca Gomez. No one else reached back out to me. And prior to the demo, I really wanted to meet with everyone involved. I wasn't given proper notice. Although I can and I was suggested to do so, I have yet to retain any council or to go after the city. However, I do want to make sure that someone is going to be meeting with me and trying to get this resolved amicably before, you know, it leads to litigation. And this is, the city claims that they're up for the development, especially in Old Town. That's not the case. So, what can I get from you guys?
The council can't respond, because it's not on the agenda tonight, but I believe staff may be able to provide a response outside of this meeting.
Can we get that on the agenda? How do we do that?
It's up to the council members to put something on the agenda, so you can request. If they so desire, they can put it on the agenda.
Okay. Well, I'd like to request for this to be put on the agenda. I don't know if they vote on it or how that works.
They have a provision later on where they talk about agenda items that they want to add, so it's up to the council.
Okay, so we'll definitely do that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Ruth Cortova. After Ruth, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, City Councilmembers, and Councilwoman Blanca Gomez. For the past couple of council meetings, I have met some unfortunate circumstances, and I was not available to discuss the state-of-the-art technology, the red light camera proposal that I had submitted. And a couple of council meetings, Mayor Potem, you had discussed that you're concerned. You had identified a person running the red light, and you were concerned about public safety. To the best of my knowledge, you were not concerned about public safety when you went batting for SB 54, city to city, protecting criminals, a safe haven for criminals. You were not concerned about the life and safety of the police officers when they go facing the barrel of a shotgun looking for these people, but for pushing another political push, you're concerned about the life and safety of the public, protecting criminals against criminals. But let's talk about the proposal that I submitted. I discussed a proposal and submitted a proposal, the state-of-the-art technology, the red light cameras. And why did I say that? Because they're up there. And a little background, and I'll try to make it as quick as I can, shooting from the hip. 2011 to 2012, there was a class action lawsuit for defendants from the City of Victorville, brought lawsuit against the City of Victorville against the red light cameras. In violation of the Fourth, probable cause, Sixth, due process, Eleventh, equal protection, but most important, business and professions code, failed technology, the red light cameras. So, they went down. 2015, it was overturned by the Court of Appeals. Overturned. There was no violation of the Fourth, Sixth, Eleventh, but there was on the Business and Profession Code. Since 2012 to the present, we've had Prop 47, 57, AB 109, SB 60, no bail, and SB 54, safe haven for criminals. And now you go batting your heels like Mary Poppins. What do we do? We need more law enforcement now. What did you expect? There's risks associated to the decisions that you make for political gain. And now the taxpayers have to come up with it. So, I came up with a proposal. How do we come up with this, with the red light cameras, with the state-of-the-art technology, so we can positively identify the suspects in a fatality, saving costs? And the red light cameras would be the voice of the victim deceased, the voice of the DA's office, the voice of Detective Bureau and Co cases, and helping law enforcement. So, we replaced law enforcement officers, not all of them, the traffic officers with the state-of-the-art technology. And with the $1 million, we put more law enforcements out, putting an impact on crime, felony crimes. Now, don't look the other way, because you know I'm talking to you. Think about what you're doing.
Ramiro Rodriguez.
Going back to the hiring of the city manager, I have here the lawsuit, the first from 2013, and it just states, "I ask you, the citizens of Victorville, to read it." You can find it, you can Google it, and see every page. You look, you see all the shenanigans and things that went wrong. And you know what? It just happened. And these people that are here, that were defendants, are now plaintiffs. So, they're suing the city now. One of the things I talked about indemnification is going to put, these people are going to be sued. That's why it's very important that in that contract, it's there so that any lawsuits against the city manager and the city are going to be covered by us, the taxpayers. So, it's nothing that I'm making up. And also, how do we look in the eyes of the other states, of the other cities? After, and I don't blame the city manager. I blame the city council for allowing this, for going ahead with it. There's plenty of other people capable that can do the job without that, having that in their history, in their past. That's all. It happens. You can't erase it, no matter what the lawyer says, but the SEC sets up a thing else. So, on that, I'll leave that alone. Second thing I want to talk about, a couple weeks ago, the city council ejected Ms. Maggie Martin from here. They told her to leave, like they did today at the beginning of the meeting. I still see her there. She's still there. We're allowed it three minutes. Mr. Fakety, Joe Fakety has been made to leave, because he wouldn't leave the podium. Alejandro Garcia also was asked to leave too. Many people, Ms. Pepper Blakely's asked to leave. She didn't leave there after three minutes. But two weeks ago, or two meetings ago, she was told to leave. She didn't leave. She was there for 12 minutes. She walked around, she talked to the sheriff, to the chief, till finally she just got up and said, "I'm leaving." So, where are the Brown rules? Where are the Robertson's rules of order? Is this the white privilege that we talk about quietly in the back rooms? When the three minutes come up to me, is my brown skin going to allow me 12 minutes to be up here, and I won't be removed? Why wasn't she removed? What makes her different than me, than Mr. Fakety, than Alejandro, than Pepper Blakely, and those that have been removed from here? She was told to leave, and she didn't leave too. And that time took 12 minutes till she got up and says, "I'm out of here." So, right now, when the time comes, does I have brown skin? Am I going to be accosted outside, told to leave? But why isn't she? And remember, in the beginning of this meeting, you told her to leave. Did she leave? Did she leave?
Your time is up.
So, am I going to be awarded 12 minutes up here, like she was in the last meeting? Is anybody going to stand with me?
Your time is up.
Anybody else? Okay.
Your time is up. Okay. Join him.
But the thing is, why wasn't she escorted outside?
Okay, your time is up.
I'm saying, why was she given that privilege and not me? Because of my brown skin?
Chief.
The council is not allowed to answer questions that are not on the agenda. That is not on the agenda tonight.
But she is answering.
I'm just proving a point. I'm respectful.
I think you've been asked to.
I'm doing this for the people here.
I believe your time is up.
But I'm just letting you know what happened. That's all. There's Roberts rules or whatever they have, but see, my brown skin doesn't hold me that, and she's still here.
Maggie Martin.
Are we having fun yet?
Well.
I'm going to respond to Mr. Ramiro. First of all, I think the man needs to get a hearing aid, because you told me if I didn't settle down, I'd have to leave. Look at it on the video. Okay, and the reference, what he's referencing from two or three council meetings ago, "I wasn't here for 12 minutes when you told me I had to leave. I got up, and I walked out into the foyer," where a conversation took place with him that basically, well, I'll just put it to you this way. Laying my boundaries down. Okay? And I resent, and I hope he's in the room, because I'll say it to her, I'll say it to you, I'll say it to anyone here or out there. Don't throw down that race card, Blanca. Don't throw down that race card. I'm no different than you. You know who makes me different than you? You do. He does. That's what makes me different, because that's their distinction. Now, I'll move on from there, because that's all they've got. When they don't have anything else, just like high school, college, or street thugs, let me throw down that race card, because that's all you got. So, hold on. And remember earlier, Your Honor, when I was speaking about disrespectful, misbehaving, discourteous, rude, aggressive, younger people? Well, I'm looking at one right there. I'm older than me from your mother, so I'm going to speak to that. I've sat here and I've listened to her call out the city manager time and time again. First of all, get over it, the SEC thing, get over it. It's ancient history. It's done. It's over. Try and find something new to mundane, something else to pick on. I've watched her and other people pick on our police chief. Excuse me. I've watched her call out deputies by names, making baseless allegations of harassment of the homeless. As I said to her in an email, and let me tell you, you want to talk about emails? You should see the emails that I sent her. Did everyone get a response? No. There's a process. There's a process. If you have someone unhappy, you go file a citizen's complaint. Now, I don't know the particulars of which, the sensitivity of which Ms. Gomez is thinking, but that's the starting point. But this child here, here it is. It's coming. She's like the child, the person in childhood who didn't get the positive strokes and attention they needed. And finally, when they found out what would work, which would be to be belligerent, defiant,
Your time is up.
disrespectful, it's all about her. That's the way she gets her attention.
Jose Chavez. Is there a Jose Chavez here? No? Joe Fagetti.
I'm Italian. I don't have a race card. I'm sorry. Anyway. Yeah, anyway, if I went back to work, you'd make barely nothing what I'd make. So, I'm glad you make what you make, and it's good. However, Gloria, several times in every meeting that I come here, you instigate, you have reactions. You don't listen to your constituents. You don't listen to your coworkers or anybody, okay? It's very arrogant. It's very irritating, and it shows that you're just not qualified whatsoever in any way. Okay, I filed the complaint with Internal Affairs about you lying to a police officer, and I haven't got anything back from that yet, and I don't know why, but I've been sick. So, I'm starting to get better, but I'll follow up, and I hope you get charged. These guys are not even informed about how your word of bill works. It's crazy. So, but you don't have full disclosure on anything. It's all half-assed. Information withheld. You withhold it from her. You don't allow anybody access to it. It's not fair. Okay, now, code enforcement, okay? I decide to volunteer and help people that have issues with code enforcement. I belong to a place called SEMA. It's run by three congressmen in Washington, and I think Deborah might be a part of that also. She might tell you about it. But it protects people's rights. It protects your federal land rights and your collections and so forth down the road. Okay? And earlier, as I said, you just can't make up rules and take people's property in code enforcement. And code enforcement doesn't do anything that they're supposed to do unless you have money and they can take it from you. So, if you have a little pop-up tent and you're out stealing and selling drugs in front of the gas station, that's okay. But if you have a piece of property and there's a drop of oil there, okay? You're fined excessively, and this and this. So, you violated a lot of people's federal land rights. I'm going to make an agenda to come once a month to Law Library and help people out, and with being pushed. Now, the other thing too is, we went to court, and I took you to court, Gloria. The bill that the judge... that the judge approached me with, what she told you to go pound sand with was $1,500. How did it get to $18,000? Okay? And did you pay that? You're responsible to pay that. $1,500 to $18,000. So what cahoots are you doing?
Your time is up.
Got it. You've got no answer?
Your time's up.
Yeah. So is yours.
Good evening again. I think this is the most time I've ever spoken at a council meeting. I just wanted to pose a question. Qualified and elected, I would say somebody who is elected has been determined to be qualified by the people who elected them. That's not my purpose, my purpose for coming up here originally was. I've spoken to this before about Councilmember Gomez. With all of the conferences and seminars and meetings and conventions and everything that she has attended, I'm amazed that she has no idea what the role of a council member, an elected council member, is. It is not a council member's job to make the daily, day-to-day decisions of a city, a school board, whatever the entity may be. Their job is to hire a CEO or city manager. I understand Victorville, the council actually hires two people, the city attorney and the city manager. The council's job is to then direct the city manager, and then I'm assuming the city attorney as well, to take some action, do some, such as policy. It's not the council's job to write policy. I wasn't here last week, but I did watch the video, and Councilmember Gomez was having a real problem that the council was turning over to Mr. Metzler, and then maybe also our city attorney, the job of writing policy. That's their job. That's what you hire them for. It is their job to, however they deem the appropriate way to do that, they bring it back to you, you review it, you approve it, you send it back. It's entirely within your privilege to do whatever you need to do with that, but it is not your job to write it. That's not your expertise. Your expertise is to represent the people that elect you, not run the district, or the city, or whatever other governmental agency you may have been elected to do. And I just wanted to make another comment really quickly about the, whatever, the thing is where the city covers you for lawsuits. They cover all of you. It's not just Mr. Metzler. Any person affiliated, any of you sitting up there are covered by that. So you all have the same privilege? I don't know what that word would be, as Mr. Metzler would have if there were to be a lawsuit. Thank you much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Those are all the cards that I have. Therefore, we move on to reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. A few items, community services related, Friends of the Library movie rental sale that continues through May 31, 2019. It's $3 for three movie rentals, and that's taking place at the Victorville Library. Our annual summer reading program registration opens on May 25, 2019, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., also at the Victorville Library. And then, we're excited about Doris Davey's pool opening on Memorial Day, which is just next week. Monday, May 27 is our first day, and it's open from 2 to 4. We actually charge $3 per person to get into the pool. One thing that's off-script, at the June 4 council meeting coming up, we're expecting or we're planning to bring back the budget for consideration for the upcoming fiscal year. Last Tuesday, thank you for participating in the budget workshop that we had. We put a lot of effort into that, and with that, we're soliciting your feedback, comments, questions, interest between now and I would say probably Thursday of next week, because that's when we'll likely have to start preparing the budget books. But certainly intend to have that presented June 4, and it would be prepared in such a way where we can actually deliberate the consideration and approval of that at that meeting, presuming, of course, the council is ready. So, to the extent you have additional comments to share with me, I would certainly welcome them.
If I may ask, what do you mean, please share comments? I don't understand that.
Any guidance you can offer with respect to the presentation we made, especially as it relates to the question that we asked the council as to priorities? We did present the budget in such a way where there was about $1.8 plus or minus million dollars identified for discretion. We did make recommendations as to what you could do with those, including supplementing or depositing monies to your general fund reserve to try to meet your reserve targets, but also did identify about $800,000 plus or minus that could be available for a variety of different capital improvement projects. We suggested what those might be. Certainly would appreciate and encourage any feedback regarding those, especially if you think we may have missed some.
Thank you, city manager. Okay, now we move on to A3. Ms. Ramirez, this is where you can actually agendize your item.
I still would like to go ahead, and first I would like to say that we need to discuss and bring back the timeline of the lighting of downtown so that our residents know that we're concerned. And number two, I still would like to, even though I made a motion, I would like to continue the study of the library because of the fact that we are growing and we need to meet the needs. But basically, I want to thank you for staying so long and being here and being so responsive to our needs. I thank you as an audience and as a residence, and I hope that you understand that if you were to talk to us, we would listen, and that we are concerned about your needs.
You have to make a motion for, to bring back your...
Yes, I did.
A second.
But you had two items. She had two items going.
There were two items that you were talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I just...
You have to separate them.
Oh. All right. I make a motion to discuss the library for the next meeting.
I would like to modify that to add our part-timers to that.
I did it again, Blanca.
I would like to modify to add part-timer employees to your motion.
I can't, because my concern is simply the library and the meeting of the needs of the residents. So that's where I stopped. My second motion is to discuss the lighting and the...
And we need to second your first one.
Oh, we have to wait.
I have to take a second on Councilmember Gomez's modified motion. Is there a second? There being no second, that dies? And now, on the original one for the library?
I second her motion for the library.
I have a motion by Mayor Protam Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I have a question with that motion. So with that motion, we're going to talk about the library, but not the library part-time employees that would produce the benefit to the community, is that correct? Excuse me, the city council, the city clerk is speaking? I'm sorry, were you just, oh, okay. Well, I overheard when I was speaking that she was a little louder than I was, so I figured maybe she was trying to catch my attention, but if that's not the case, no worries, I apologize for that. Is that, is that the case? Because I'm proposing to speak about part-time employees in that division, if that's the case, but if that's excluded and it wasn't in the motion, I want to know, just for clarification and interpretation.
Blanca, my concern is the question that the library is not meeting the needs of the residents because of space, and the question that it needs to be reconsidered as to the expansion because of the fact that people are elbowing each other. We need to look at the building, there's only one door in and one door out. It's not, right now, my concern is the facility. When we discuss this item later, we can also bring back the discussion of the hiring of two full-time, but at this point in time, I'm just concerned that we're, that we have a building that is to be taken care of, period.
Do you mind repeating the motion then?
It's to bring back the library item next council meeting.
Okay, so then it's open for interpretation. Okay, thank you.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Get a second one.
My motion is that we need to have a discussion on the timeline of lighting downtown for the sake of safety and the question of bringing businesses back. This is a question of residents being able to walk out of their home, whether it be on the sidewalk or the alley, that it should be totally lighted, because the question is, we, the city, are obliged and responsible for you, and we need to make certain that you are safe. I know that we have approved the lighting, I simply would like to know an update as to when it's going to happen, and where they're going to be put, because I think the question is, you have waited 20 years for something to happen, and it's time that the city put its citizens first, which we do.
You have 30 seconds.
But I'm hoping, that is my motion.
I have a question. So, my understanding is we just got an update on this. So, Mr. Metzler?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm going to have to track through my emails, but I believe just this week I sent an update to the council on all the street lighting activity, and it did in fact speak to the street lighting in Old Town, actually as we've expanded the scope. I know the members of the public came to speak and shared perhaps their view of what the lighting survey is that they've done. We've actually done our own, and we've actually already identified locations in Old Town, including intersections with alleys and alleys themselves, to where we believe there is appropriate to add additional lighting. And my understanding, Brian, is that we've actually already submitted that plan to Edison for them to consider, and that's a precursor to getting the actual design, completing the design, and then actually approving the funds to actually install. So, we're actually making quite a bit of progress on streetlights altogether in the city, including the Square Mile. So, certainly we can agendize it if it's the council's desire, but maybe if you like, we can talk through that memo a little bit more, and perhaps even share some of the more detailed lighting studies that we've done relative to the intersection with the alleys and the alleys themselves.
Well, I'm willing to second that motion.
It was already seconded.
It was already a second.
So call for the question then. There's a motion under a second.
Do you want to continue it on the agenda, or...
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
So calling of the question is fine, as long as no one else wants to speak. If they do, then you have to go through the normal process. So I'm, I think I said enough when I said that the council already received an update.
Motion by Mayor Protam Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
As a point of order, I didn't know we had opportunity to make discussion, but I appreciate Mrs. Jones bringing that up.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The update that you had stated, that was comment that you provided, and I didn't know we had that openness, but I appreciate you having that.
Well, I'm glad that you do.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything to agendize? Do you have anything to agendize?
Yes. The lady that requested that we put on the city council agenda regarding the building that was demolished downtown, that would be very unusual for the council to meet with property owner, but in this case, she indicated that she's been trying to get a development and has gone through. At least I want to report from the staff. I had a call from this lady, indicated I would, someone would get back, and then I found out, because I made an inquiry to the manager, that the city has a very thick file, has been working in regard to this piece of property for, I believe, about two years, which greatly concerned me, that nothing had been done. I believe, I think it's improper to negotiate directly with the individual, since my understanding there's a threatened litigation. On the other hand, I think the city council does need to be briefed by the manager in regard to how long this incident has gone on, and the question to the attorney is, is that an executive session item or agendized item for public discussion?
Well, I did hear a threat of potential litigation, so I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion in closed session on that.
Then I would like to have that item be placed on the coming agenda as a full discussion, so the council can have a discussion with the attorney in executive session regarding this issue, and especially since a couple of people have come to the microphone tonight and talked about the city being threatened and how much money we spent, but it's important that the city council be adequately informed in regard to these issues. That's my motion.
Second.
And I would modify your motion to include the documentation. I don't think we should go in just blindly, assuming that we have all the information, because we do not.
Is there a second?
I did second.
Oh, you did.
I seconded Mr. Cox's motion.
I'm asking for a second for Ms. Gomez. There being no second, that motion dies? The original motion made by Mr. Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Anyone else have anything to agendize?
That's all I have, thank you.
So, what I would like for the council to consider is part-timers who have worked in the city with options of compensation and hourly wages and their longevity here in the city of Victorville, before we go to individuals who are furloughed at 36 hours, who potentially can get 40, benefit the 10%, and not have a Friday open. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
The other thing is, we have an appointed mayor in front of us who has abused her power and the system as status quo, and you can verbatim see it in and out. And so the appointed mayor with the majority of the vote was able to abscond roughly $18,000. That could be a salary for a librarian full-time, or for our parks, the 22, not the 23, because I don't consider 1.2 million a golf course admirable of any sorts. So I'd like to have agendized that this woman, who's also a taxpayer, not use the funds that she has used so loosely, benefiting our city attorney, that she pay back, use it as a pay system, whether it's today, in two years, in five years, in 10 years, even in 20 years. But I think justice is served when she's able to pay back that debt. And that's my motion.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Also, I heard that there's funds in our discretionary fund system. I think we need to start looking at our funds system very closely. We have 81, I thought there were 88 accounts, but knowing that there's only 81 accounts, we hold a lot with our discretionary funds. I would like to see specifically, not that the council have a workshop, because it doesn't really benefit the public, as you can see, you're very limited in the discussion, but to have what are called these two or three yearly classes where there's... where there's actually a financing class, and there was going to be, but because I'm so boisterous, it was taken away from the community and never really introduced. So I like to see the general public have these financial types of courses to understand how their money is revenueed and expended so that they're more participatory in terms of why you're here and how we can affect it and affect that change, not let the city council always have control of the monies when sometimes we're so busy in our niches and we fail to go outside the revelatory diversity of the mindset of something outside of here, the brain, which is four walls.
Thirty seconds? Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
Mr. Cox, you don't have to nod, everybody, everybody knows. That was all.
I'll pass, I'll wait till the next meeting.
No other items to be agendized, then we move on to E-four. And this is reports from council members, three-minute time limit. Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by just clarifying something very quickly. I think there's a misunderstanding. Employees of the city, as long as they're working within, let me just speak about our CEO and council members, as long as we're acting within the scope of our jobs, we are protected legally in lawsuits. It is a requirement. If there's a situation where the council deems that another council member or the city manager has done something or operated outside the scope of his or her office, then that person is on his own, so to speak. That's the way it is everywhere, it's not unique to Victorville. All right, so very happy that I was able to attend as an observer the First Homelessness Solutions Task Force meeting. I'm happy to say that the team put together shows great promise and I trust will put forward an actionable plan that will serve the interests of our community and our businesses very well. I attended a VVWR A meeting, an SBC TA Mountain Desert Policy Committee meeting in Councilmember Cox's stead. And the very good news is that the Green Tree Project is expected to begin late this year without any bonding against it. There's, there are more details certainly to be worked out on this project, but it is good news that there's going to be no bonding attached to it. I did take a VVWR A tour with the former CEO Logan Olds. It was his last tour there, so it was, it had a lot of meaning for him and, and me as well. I was grateful to the man who considers that business his Disneyland. He's beloved by the employees at VVWR A, he's an all-around good guy, and I wish him much success on his new adventure. I attended Victorville's annual employee picnic, I was grateful for the invitation. The self-funded event was a terrific display of camaraderie that reached well beyond city walls. There was a lot of laughter and family fun. And when it came to the ballgames, good-spirited competition, it was something to see. I even got to pet the cutest little piglet there. And I just have to say something about our employee Liz. I just have to say she came prepared to give her all and the next day, I understand she couldn't walk at all because she worked so hard in the ballgame. On May fifteenth, with a flag in my hand, I stood alongside the-
You have thirty seconds?
Local Patriot Guard Riders on the Dale Evans Bridge to support their good work for veterans and first responders, and I'm so proud of their sacrificial work for others. Thank you very much.
Rita, did you have something?
I would like to thank Denise Wells and Paul Marsh for attending the Veterans Celebration at the Fairgrounds this last Saturday. I'm pleased to say that they represented the city of Victorville and I'm honored that they did. I'm also, would like to remind everyone to honor our military for Memorial Day, where they have sacrificed and given, in many cases, their lives to give us our country that we have today. I'm very grateful to be an American and I'm very grateful that my own cousin is a Congressional Medal of Honor winner of Korea. And I asked him before he died, he died at eighty-two, he was only nineteen, would you do it again? He said, "I will always do it again, for I'm an American, just like my father had said for the Second World War. I defend my country." Thank you, and I'm proud of all of you.
There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. And I'm sorry, it was not a pleasant item that she discussed.